Good to go.
All right, I'll take a motion to come out of recess and continue with this work session. I'll make a motion to come out of recess.
I'll second it.
Motion second to come out of recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those may. The chair says the ayes have it. We're out of recess and back to the budget hearings. This is April twenty ninth, starting at five thirty in council chambers. And tonight we start with the fire department. So somehow it seems appropriate. We're getting way too much involved in that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, good.
But before we do, Kerry has a brief recap of the changes that we made this night.
Sure. You bet.
So there's really only a couple small changes. We took out the ten thousand for the fire inspection revenue and added another thousand to the fireworks. And I think that was the only ones I wrote down. I did put in five thousand two hundred that we just found out about yesterday for the truck for parts that I guess they had a leasing, well, applying into an agreement with them at the beginning of the year.
You will recall that we bought three trucks on a lease purchase program with GM. Because of the supply chain issues, it took so long to get delivery on them that we forgot we bought them. But Mr. Harrow did come to council to get approval to make the purchase, as you recall. And so, so they're coming finally. And...
They got chips?
Let's hope. We're going to, one will be assigned to parks which is in the general fund, which of course we bought yesterday. So we wanted to have that discussion now. The other two trucks are headed for wastewater and street department, which of course we will be discussing a little bit later on tonight, so those will be included in that.
But they're funded for this year, not actually, or is it a lease purchase?
It's a lease purchase, so it'll be a five-year lease purchase with a one-dollar line.
Reminder.
And other than that, I did double check on those finance or franchise fees for A1, those spark light. We are still receiving brand, or brand franchise fees. It's about twenty-five thousand a year that we get for those. And I looked at one of the recent bills and it doesn't specify on their franchise fees, but we're receiving them, so I'm assuming they're they're being charged or somehow passing the game around.
So I would suggest we don't say too much more about it because they might be listening.
Yep, I got one monkey right here.
I mean, there isn't, there isn't agreement in effect, so technically they should still be sent.
Yeah, I was just surprised when I see my seat on my desk.
So those changes added up to sixteen thousand two hundred and to the negative, I guess. So I increased the use of funding by sixteen thousand two hundred and it's now at three hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred and six dollars.
So those were the changes that you all talked about yesterday that impacted the general fund out. So, so now we can move to fire department. Again, this is a pretty similar budget to the one that you have been seeing for the last few years. I will make note on the personnel cost section that public safety retirement system allocation of that budget goes up from eight hundred and four thousand dollars to nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That's a little bit more dramatic than the one you saw in the least department yesterday, but part of that reason is it's because of the larger number of retirees plus the larger workforce in general. It's not a lot larger, but it's larger. So, and again, these are not numbers that we calculate, these are numbers that are sent to us by the retirement system to put in. So we don't, we don't have a lot of leeway in how that number is calculated or anything else, so. And just a side note, we will again be talking to our bond brokers tomorrow. We're very close to having a deal put together. And so we'll probably do another attempt item with you real soon to explain where we've come with our dealings with state and the boards and getting bond rating and insurance for the bond issue. So that's not on tonight's agenda, but I'll just let you know that we're at that point now. And probably not the next council meeting, but the one after that we'll have some information for you that'll get us closer to being ready for a lot of this.
Then we will have to revisit the budget once we, wouldn't that be affecting the budget anyway?
It, it probably won't because what would happen is in this budget right now, we've allocated nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Probably about seventy or eighty thousand of those dollars are the current premiums for the pension. The rest of it is money that's going to come out of here and move over to the debt service that we're going to be paying. So, so to a large degree, we're going to be swapping numbers, but that will probably require a budget adjustment that you'll have to approve. Excuse me, but, but then we'll also, assuming that you approve what we recommend for the renewal of the one cent sales tax and share that revenue fifty-fifty with streets, then that revenue will supplement the somewhat larger amount of debt service that we're going to have to pay. So those numbers are yet to be worked out, but we will hopefully very quickly here, because we have, we have meeting tomorrow, very quickly we'll be able to give you a firm recommendation on what we would like to do for the block. That will include approving a bond issue and it will also include putting the one cent sales tax back on.
And how about the cost associated to this because it's going to cost us money for it? Will that also probably would...
That will all be part of the package that you get for approval. And Mr. Reeder will probably back down to take that responsibility. As far as the costs other than personnel costs, nothing here that I don't believe that changes dramatically from prior years. And so any questions you have, we'd be happy to.
I think the only one that I see that's just standing up on the diesel, we didn't have twenty-one, twenty, we have four hundred thirty-one dollars. And now we actual eight thousand five hundred and twenty, but we budgeted twenty thousand. What, what has happened, does this have to do with some different mode of transportation we added? I mean, why did it go up by fifty-six percent in the diesel?
I can answer that. When we were using the fuel cars, we didn't have a way to know what, if they were putting diesel or unleaded in their vehicles. So everything was just getting charged to unleaded or, you know, just gasoline, the gasoline line. And now that we're using the pumps over at the garage, we have logs and we know how much is actually diesel and how much is regular gasoline.
But you still budgeted twenty thousand for gas and twenty thousand?
Yeah, forty thousand total, which was what was budgeted the previous year.
Okay.
Under just regular gasoline.
I see that.
Go ahead.
Under education and training, under the year-to-date actual, the number thirty-two is in parentheses, and I just wondered, what does that mean?
They, they were giving a check to cover, I forgot who said number of donation, basically to cover some of their training.
It was a grant. And we got a scholarship to send four guys up to Phoenix for their fire school. And they, they paid us back a thousand dollars, so. I know we've probably spent some in hotels and stuff, but it's in a different place.
I'm not sure why it's a negative thirty-two instead of just zero. It might just be a timing issue with when things are recorded.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we just recently sent off a check to Palominas Fire District for our Fire One and Two class that's being held right now. That hasn't came out of this budget, so it's going to be approximately five thousand dollars total when it's all said and done. So luckily, or not luckily, we weren't able to send anybody to paramedic school. And that would have eaten up that whole ten thousand with one person. So.
But the good news is, is that at the end of this, everyone on payroll will have firefighter license.
Currently, yep.
Which got a little backed up. There were more than one person on fire department.
And we're getting ready to hire, or we're going to try to hire three more people. And whether they have it or not, we may have to send those three to fire schools. But they'll have two years to, to get it. We put them through our own basic academy, qualified firefighters if they not have it. But we do require them to get state certified Fire One and Two.
And you have a budget for that, with ten thousand, is that what you're proposing?
Yes. I actually thought we bumped it up to twelve, but maybe I'm thinking something.
Changed while you were working?
Yeah.
No, actually, the test results will help, I'm sorry.
This twenty thousand for grant match will cover if we happen to get the pumper tender. That, that will match, that will work as a match. Pump tender, we put in for the twenty thousand grant match?
Yeah, I think it's a five percent match and it was about three hundred and fifty thousand plus a small micro grant which was worth fifty thousand. If we were to get both of them, it would have been about four hundred thousand, so five percent is, is right there.
Okay. Somehow I was thinking it was more than that.
Last year it was.
Maybe that's, oh, yeah.
The latter truck, yeah.
Yeah, we have a little, little bit larger match.
Yeah, okay, that's where I'm living in the past.
So with these three that you're possibly going to hire, does that bring us up to full staff then, or are we still down?
Well, we have two guys that have injury. One of them should be in that area within the next two months. We have one still unknown, so.
Either they're off on injury, they're still...
Still going.
Yeah, still have position.
So we're, if we hire three more, then that would put us up to full staff.
Okay, so then, I'm looking, how much is a set of turnouts?
Right now, between twenty-five to three thousand for average-sized people. If we have to, we just recently had to send, we bought a new pair for one of you firefighters. He's, he got the biggest pair they make, had to send him back to get him bigger. So that was about thirty-five hundred dollars, four thousand dollars, so you could probably figure on average about three thousand or a little more. And I think that's the one I added a little bit to because if we had to buy turnouts for three more people, that would be just about how it is.
Yeah, thanks. I was wondering if that would be enough. Because I was not sure how much the...
Yeah, well, we have helmets, we have boots and stuff like that, that the people that have left leave with us. And if we're lucky, somebody will fit into them. If not, then we have to buy new stuff.
At this point, we probably have just about every size known to the human species.
Just about, yeah.
And as long as they're not outdated, they can be reused.
Yeah, they're good for ten years. Anything else for fire?
Nothing from, nothing from here, so.
All right, well then we move...
So Jimmy, you should go to that now. No, stick around a little bit, we might have someone. Okay, so let's see.
Going to public, general government.
General Government Grants.
Page sixty, fifty-nine.
Okay, I think most of you know that this is, general government grants are basically, this is, this is a budget page where we project. And this year, most of what is projected here are grant applications that have already been sent into the respective grant agency. And as you can see, the big dog on the block is the FEMA fire suppression system. And even though it is not likely that we're going to spend a whole twenty-five million in one year because we're projecting it's going to be a two or three-year construction cycle for that project. We do put the total amount in until, until we've had actually a first construction phase. And then in subsequent years, you'll see that number reduced by the amount that's left in the budget to spend on those particular projects. So like you say, the fire suppression system is the big one. I think we're supposed to have a clue on, on that one in September, October, is that...
I hope not, right? We're hoping October.
And, and of course, associated with that is what's called the Bridges Grant. And that's basically to replace bridges over the Eagle Falls Channel. And again, this is a grant that's been applied for. Two grants that have not yet been applied for are the City Hall Solar System and Commerce Street Grant. The City Hall Solar System Grant is currently being written by a grant writer courtesy of local first Arizona in cooperation with USDA and Roble Health. So from, from what we understand, talking to USDA coordinator in the area, solar projects are very high on their priorities. So we are currently in the process of working with that grant writer to do that. Once, once he has completed that grant and we've submitted to USDA, the same grant writer is also going to put together a grant to replace Commerce Street roughly from the library to busy parking lot. As, as many of you know, and I think one or two of you may have been underneath that road, it's, it's supported by mining timber. And we did have, we did have a minor failure about ten years ago that only required replacement of about twenty or thirty feet of that road. But instead of using mining timber, we redesigned it using steel beams. This project is going to require both engineering and construction. And actually, because the nature of it ten years ago was an emergency, we just happened to have a professional engineer working on staff at that point. So he designed beams and the contractor at that time was Rutherford Diversified. And from start to finish, we did the whole thing a week. Now, we won't be so lucky during that whole stretch, okay? And so part of the trip here is going to be be able to do it without causing any more disruption than necessary because you know how necessary Commerce Street is. And so that means it isn't going to happen on July, over July fourth, or some such date like that, so. So anyway, now both of us have a long way to go, but, but it is highly likely to be able to apply for and receive awards on those grants in this fiscal year and be able to complete it in this year. And that's it for that page. Questions?
Yeah, I guess, what are the probabilities, the chances some of these grants would come in? I mean, based on experience, I mean, do you think we have a good chance of getting those based on, especially on this, on this suppression phase two, twenty-five million?
Fifty-five million overall.
Yeah, I'm just looking at that.
What, my experience, you know, dealing with the, the agency that would award the grant, dealing with the, the grant writer and our staff, and this is in partnership with the Arizona Water Company, that's why it's a fifty-five million dollar grant. I mean, you know, most of these large grants look for a fairly substantial local share. Quite frankly, I believe that the local share will exceed the grant amount. And when that's the case, your opportunities to be awarded those grants improve dramatically. So I mean, same goes for the, the solar system at City Hall. I mean, our share will be the construction cost at the City Hall. The, the solar system will merely be an accessory. And so when, when we're able to go to the funding agencies with such large matches, our, our chances will improve dramatically. So I'm not saying they're slamming down, but the city has been working on the fire suppression system grant for well over a year. I don't know exactly, because it started before I came back to work. And they were well along in April last year when I, when I returned. So this has been a very long and tedious process with a lot of engineers involved, both our on-call engineering firms and as well as Arizona's engineering staff. So we've had a fairly substantial team working on that. And I think, I, I don't think anyone can deny that we, we are demonstrating the need to replace that antiquated system, both the potable water system as well as the fire suppression system. So, yeah, no, I'm really...
Good chance, yeah, okay.
All I can say is the best chance I've seen in the nine years I've been...
Oh, okay, it's good for you, so.
And you can throw money at them along with asking for money, they're much more receptive.
You know, just, just as a, as a side comment, you know, projects of this magnitude are rare because we really don't have the staff to do it. In case of fire suppression system, we've got the entire Arizona Water Company engineering staff working on it, plus a couple of our on-call engineers working on this thing. Which if this was up to us to do all by ourselves, we'd never be able to put the application together, it's that complicated.
It's a big, it's a big market.
So, so, and that coupled with the fact that all of a sudden, a lot of money became available from the federal government. I mean, hopefully, we're sitting on the perfect story here, and I've talked about a good story this night. What else?
Would you want to add, if we had to pay a grant writer for the amount of time it's been spent on this one grant alone, that alone would probably drain our bank account, so, so I have to give really kudos to Danielle who spent numerous hours...
Yeah, every grant on this page is being assisted by a volunteer grant writer. Okay? Public Safety Fire Grants. Jimmy, may you want to comment on some of this? We've got the, the perpetual FEMA grant, which this year we've asked for three hundred fifty thousand. There's a Governor's Highway Safety, the Office of Governor's Highway Safety Grant for four twenty-two, FEMA micro grant, and a grant match, which is a transfer from general fund grant match, which you saw when you were at the, when you were at the general fund. All of, again, all of these grants have already been applied for. And, and just like the previous page, all of these grants have been written by grant writers at the cost of the city. So Jim, do you want to give a, just a brief synopsis of what is in all of these?
The Governor's Highway Safety Grant, we applied for a new ambulance, we have a new rescue truck, a new stretcher, the electric gurney. We put in for new fire hoses, new extrication equipment. I don't have that list in front of me right now.
The FEMA grant?
The FEMA grant, we put in for a pumper tender, I believe it's a two thousand gallon pumper tender. So that was about three hundred and thirty thousand, I believe.
And what's in the FEMA micro?
The micro grant was wildland hose, also structured firefighting hose, maybe some wildland firefighting EPE and some tools for wildland stuff. I believe that's the long short of it.
Yeah, I just, last year you had applied for five hundred thousand, and what has transpired, and this year you've gone to three fifty? Is that, was that a difference? Oh, this was similar, the same, and we adjusted the numbers, just because you had five hundred thousand last year? And we didn't, I mean, we didn't get anything, and we have, we have, we have budgeted in three fifty. So what has transpired here by the number?
Ladder truck.
Yeah, then, then you got, then you got something else, then you got anything else here? Oh, that's the question, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, we, we struck out last year.
Okay, so that's, that's the reason, okay, okay.
The criteria for, for the FEMA grant this year was, they took priority over a smaller amount.
Okay.
So it wasn't a priority on there, just to give away.
So it's a different grant?
Different.
Last, last year was a ladder truck, this year it's a pumper.
Oh, but we didn't get the truck last year?
No, you see no ladders going up there.
Yeah, no.
Just, just as a side, the, the beauty of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety is that there's no match required. So whatever we get awarded is a hundred percent money. The FEMA equipment grant does require a small match, and that's why we have the fifty thousand, twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand this year, man.
So that's what that's for.
Yeah.
So what, roughly, when can we start hearing if we, you know, got them or not?
Usually by November with the FEMA grant. The Governor's Highway Safety Grant, this is their first year, they offered it to EMS. It's always been police, law enforcement, and they opened up the EMS division. So we, we notified by one of the police officers here, and then we jumped on it and asked for a lot of money.
It's been my experience with GOHS that they usually have a quicker turnaround on the, on grant awards. But then again, our total experience is better with law enforcement, so we'll see how this goes.
Or we can sure use that pumper figure.
Might have a good chance of...
Have you had any good experience getting this governor's?
When I was in Winslow, we got everything they ever asked for.
But so far in this...
The governor's is the first one for us.
That's the first one for them.
But we get, if you remember, we approved a lot of them out of the police department.
Yeah.
Like a radar detector and all this stuff.
Just the fire department, and this will be our first...
This will be our, yeah, because this is the first year that they've offered EMS equipment.
It would have not been on the wildland, though. Thank you.
What a truck will never give you what we want.
I heard there's one more.
Well, we're gonna go the other side of the left.
We've been hearing about this one a lot because they keep sending us paperwork signing that you have to approve. Essentially, this is a grant from the A DOT or N division. The project is to reseal every painting on one play at the airport. I don't know why they do such a hard paperwork for you to approve, but We're thinking that one of these days they're actually gonna show up out there to do the work. So, we still are able to get Funding through A DOT advice. And this was sort of a special situation, they don't normally work independently from the FAA, But they too had COVID, but They could go out to the concerts at airports, and so that's how this occurred. We are still on a funny hole with the FAA, as we have been for a number of years now. And the city attorney and I are working with FAA and with our Defense operators to attempt, once again, to resolve that issue, but Some things just never seem to fade into the sunset. This is an issue that I've been dealing with for the entirety of my career, this is, so. But the difference is, is that a few years ago, FAA said, no more money, please fix it. So, so we're negotiating yet again.
Do we think we'll fix it though, I mean?
I mean, there's really, I mean, Let me be candid, okay? The owners of the airport who have through-the-fence operations Are required to sign a through-the-fence agreement with the city And show it to the FAA to get funding. There has been a lack of total signatures In order to make that happen for a good number of years. And I mean, that dates back to the first time I worked here. And then, of course, a few years back, I don't remember, 'cause it was while I was gone, FAA said, okay, no more money. We do have a crying need for some improvements out there, if you've been out there, the The taxiway is is pretty much shot at this point. It was built at the same same time as the original runway, But we replaced the original runway like eleven years ago. And so, it's a crying need, but it's a great project because By UFA's standards, we can't put the taxiway on the same line that we built. We'll have to take out the old taxiway, and the new taxiway will basically be west of the existing taxiway. I suppose in order to accommodate the wingspan of a larger Aircraft even though we don't get a pilot. The fifty-nine hundred foot runway, probably, see, this is the biggest thing we have yet. But it's an FAA requirement, so By the time you get around to doing that, in fact, if we could do it this year, We'd replace the taxiway. And the runway, so we're calling this full redo. So, Jim, what do we think about this?
It's been a long time since we.
Yes, it was. So, that's what that's about, so we have a match which you Will transfer from the airport, which we transferred from our truck To to the airport, basically. And that will be our match, so essentially, ARPA money will fund the entire thing Because it's probably ARPA money to the state to save for their project. Any questions on that? Transit Route Tax, okay? Most of you will recognize this as the Fed tax, But stay as fancy as you can be. And so, after going without a full-time Visitor Center Manager for a good number of years, I can't say exactly because, Well, I think Jen left us in two thousand nineteen. Because she she left right before I came back for that interim stint. And and so, ever since two thousand nineteen, we've had a contract for marketing services with Jen Lurie. That contract will expire August first, And in the meantime, of course, we've been able to hire Heather Malkin. Heather's been with us for months now, roughly. And the the difference is tangible. You can see the difference, you can hear the difference, and you can feel the difference, and She's already embarked on a couple of projects, one of which is to, of course, build relationships with With our with our downtown businesses. And also to renew some of the publications that we put out in the past, But in recent years haven't done because we just had nobody to do them. And our agreement with the Mining Historical Museum has technically elapsed, but because it had a sixty-day termination clause, I had to set the termination date at May twentieth. In the meantime, kinda not too much happening there, but 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 it is happening in our temporary location. As you can see, because we're projecting a revenue of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, And that's, on the revenues, it says one percent debt tax, that's five percent. Okay, I mean, we charge, we charge the five percent per night for the Transit Route Tax, so We promise we'll change it this time. So, that's our revenue, and that, As you can see, with personnel costs for Heather and one part-time employee, There will be sufficient funds to balance that budget. And actually, we threw a little bit more than normal into the advertising fund. A lot depends on what opportunities for advertising come along, whether or not we actually spend that kind of money or not. Because this year, we actually, on our ARPA list, we put twenty-five thousand dollars for additional advertising, Which so far we haven't needed, because we were able to get a fifty thousand dollar grant from The Arizona Office of Tourism to do some major advertising in the valley. So, that, ARPA money, we'll leave that on the list because we've still got a couple of years to go here. But but we've been fortunate because AOT got money for ARPA, we got money for ARPA, Plus our our bed tax got renewed, so we've been actually putting money into fund balance On account of the fact that we didn't have Visitor Center staff for the last couple of years. And frankly, Jen's contract wasn't overwhelmingly expensive, so. But we hired Heather, we put the two of them together. They're going through the transition process right now. I don't expect to beat Jen after her contract expires in August, so. Now, that doesn't mean that somewhere along the line, we might not use her again. But if we do use her again, it will be for administering grants like the one that she's administering right now For the signage up in the valley, for which we write her fee into the grant. So, she knows that if she's got the administrative grant, she better get the money for the grant with it, so. It remains to be seen how actively in that capacity you can, and how much Heather can take on it, so. And also, as you know, I mentioned to you once before, There is a building on Main Street that we are trying very hard to convince the owner that it's time to lease it to us for visitor center. They are, they appear to be in the process of doing some of the repairs that are necessary So that we can get in there. And I was hoping that maybe we could move them along a little more quickly by knowing that If they got it done sooner rather than later, we'd get to start to generate some revenue in that building. So, but it's not mine, but you know, all I can do is call them every couple of weeks and say, where you at? So, in the meantime, we're comfortable where we are, and we're doing great things, so.
That current contract, so this is the rent?
Yeah, the rent would be.
As Jen's until such a point?
Yeah, that'll basically more than replace, well, as you can see, Jen's contract was like thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'm guessing that we won't, we won't spend thirteen thousand dollars on it.
On rent?
On rent, no.
What utilities, and maybe maybe you need to maybe allocate a little bit more just to be on the safe side?
You know, we might, we might wanna do that.
Yeah.
Unlike other budgets, I guess we don't have utility services, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I think if we're, you know, for rent, probably, what, what, at a thousand, twenty dollars maybe? So, maybe we can do like fifteen, sixteen thousand.
I'm estimating we're gonna spend a thousand dollars a month on rent, so we'll add in A reasonable amount for the utility services, because I'm sure it's not gonna be affordable.
Yeah.
It would be nice.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, well, good catch, I.
That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, we, we, well, we we never paid utilities before because we were in our own house.
Yeah, well, you just made, you made Doug a little bit.
He wasn't hard to convince.
I know.
So, anyway, that's where we are.
Yeah, can you run a, no, no.
An extension?
Don't give Doug any ideas.
No, just on the, on the advertising, I mean, you've gone up almost thirty percent from what we spent this year. That's that's a big chunk, isn't it?
It is, but with advertising, you know, opportunities for advertising come and go. We sort of figure on spending fifty thousand dollars a year Using the Arizona Office of Tourism Advertising Cooperative, Because basically, through the cooperative, AOT pays fifty percent of the ad cost. So, when we spend fifty thousand on advertising, through the cooperative, we get a hundred thousand dollars worth of advertising bucks. As they pay out and we pay out, so typically, in the past, it's always been a neighborhood fifty thousand. And now, if we, if we get a grant for more stuff and find, if we have other opportunities, Now, what I'm gonna do, since, since you caught the utilities, then I'll remove money from that to put in the utility cost.
Yeah.
It'll still be, it'll still be quite a bit, but I think coming out of COVID, I don't know that we don't wanna make our presence felt.
I think it's a little bad if you, yeah.
Well, and and also, you know, I mean, I can spread it out in here, but the reality is My revenue is two hundred thirty thousand dollars, so I can either balance it at the bottom of two hundred thirty thousand dollars or not spend it.
There is some reserves out there.
We have some reserves at this point, which we don't anticipate spending.
Right.
Well, see, what happened is over the last couple of years, we haven't spent it, you know, we've been in the COVID thing.
Well, we were eating it up before the end of February.
I don't.
My reserves were going down.
Well, I don't remember that because I wasn't here for that, but I think it, uh. But, I mean, rest assured, Alec, it will only get spent if there's an opportunity that works. Any else? Streets fund. Okay, so, as you know, this is primarily funded by the HERP and by one cent sales tax. And, excuse me. And we've also budgeted a fairly large use of fund balance in there. We've, actually, we didn't pay as much in the current fiscal year As we have in other fiscal years, so that fund balance represents paving that we adopted. But that has a fairly aggressive schedule of streets that he wants to do when coming here, Which we use up quite a bit of that fund balance, so. Fund balance is actually higher than seven hundred thousand dollars. It's close to a million, close to a million dollars in fund balance.
That's, that hasn't been used.
It hasn't been used, right. Hasn't been altered yet.
Man, the streets are gonna look really nice next year, huh?
Well, I just wanna tell you one thing, okay, and this is a, this is a point of personal privilege. When I was city manager here the first time, I could talk to city council and put the sales tax on a ballot to fund streets. I failed them, okay? One year later, you all put it on a ballot and it passed with flying colors. Now, I can either say I wasn't a very good salesman, or I was right all along, and you all just didn't listen to me. But the bottom line is, today, Our streets are five hundred percent in better condition than they were when I left at the end of two thousand thirteen. Now, it doesn't mean there's still a lot to do, because we know there is.
There is quite a few still inside the street and more.
There is, but the ones that have crossed the big box aren't up.
Yes.
So, so we're sitting in pretty good shape after all those eight years of that one cent sales tax.
You build a reserve because asphalt ain't cheap, and when you contract it out, it really isn't cheap.
Yeah.
The prices always go up when you wanna buy it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, especially because it just went up. So, I will say, when I brought to council the amount that we're gonna pay between now and the end of June, I talked to King and G and told them how much we were planning, how many times we were planning on using or purchasing, And they said they would hold back the nine to five till we get done with that. But I believe in July, when we start, it's gonna be with the nine to five dollars a ton, but, so, that saved us a little bit.
So, they they kept the old price?
Yes.
For us?
For for the next two months.
So. Matt's gotta get busy.
And how much the price is gonna go up by?
Uh, ten dollars a ton.
Doesn't sound like a lot, but there's a lot of time.
Uh, yeah, especially when we're looking at, well, just between now and June, I'm hoping about twenty-five hundred tons.
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, so, any questions?
I'm, I'm gonna use a little personal prayer this year for a second, and just maybe so We and maybe the people watching will also look at this. If you look, if we didn't have the one cent sales tax, you look at what funds this, and it's hurt, and that's five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, out of that five hundred and fourteen thousand, if you just pay for the three eyes we have in the streets, that's three hundred thousand.
Morgans?
I'm talking, Morgans.
Yeah, where'd you put that?
Well, you're seventy-three, you're gonna, hey. If you took ghosts, that money out, and you took nothing more than than just the streetlights, Okay, and the insurance, You have seventy-three thousand dollars left to pay for streets. So, just to pay the streetlights, the the insurance costs and the and manpower, It's up almost all of our HERP money, leaves us seventy-three thousand dollars to pay for. So.
That would include signs and?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, and I'm not saying that can be used for payment because of pavement. So, what I'm trying to put here forward is when, I know I'm gonna go to voters, I'm gonna say we gotta redo this one cent sales tax, At least half of it, four streets, because without that, without the other, you know, four hundred thousand that we'll be bringing in, That's what's gonna continue to pay our streets, without it, it's just not gonna happen, so.
Yeah, and if I could also. Yeah, and if I could also add into that, um, citizens of Bisbee did, voted for the one percent, and we've, for the last eight years, we've been working hard on redoing these streets all over the city, and if we don't do the one percent, not saying that we have to, but if we don't, how are we gonna maintain those streets now? Would I be back where we were eight years ago?
It's ninety-five thousand dollars just for electricity for our streetlights a year. And it's thirty-five thousand dollars just to ensure our streets. So you add that on to the three hundred, you come up with four thirty-one, take that from the five fourteen, and you got seventy-three thousand. So, I mean, people need to understand if they really want streets and they want all the other stuff, the infrastructure and stuff to work on, it, it is something that we, it needs to be renewed and, and continued. I would love, I don't know how, but I could twist every arm in the world, we could start turning our streetlights to LEDs and turning that ninety-five thousand dollars, but, but every streetlight costs the payback of twenty years.
There is already a good number of streetlights that have been converted down here. I know my entire subdivision has been, um, I don't know if they have across the highway, uh, yet, down in your neighborhood.
Not mine.
But, you know...
Couple of by the church.
This is another, this is a whole conversation for another day, but I will say this. The cost of LED is about thirty percent of the cost of the high pressure subzero fixtures, fixtures that were slowly replaced. I've been, um, I've been in the streetlight business, um, both from the standpoint of operating and as well as making the night sky friendly, uh, over the past six or seven years, and, um, this... Well, let's just say this. The electric cost here is not just electricity, it's also a maintenance contract that you've signed, um, that's probably another ten to twenty thousand dollars a year that we pay on top of the electricity, and, and, and all that does is replace burned-out light bulbs.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, um, uh, when I was in Winslow, I canceled that contract. And for less money, I bought a lift truck and resurfaced it and put it in the street department, and we did our own streetlights. And we changed them to a night sky friendly light without having a single argument that you're always gonna have with APS, which is, yeah, yes, we agree with you, but we're gonna buy from the lowest bidder. Buying from the lowest bidder has increased the light pollution out on West End Town by at least fifty percent. And LED lights will not reduce light pollution, they increase light pollution, okay? You have to do them right, you have to shield them, you have to filter them, otherwise, our light footprint gets bigger, not smaller. So, um, and they tell you, well, you know, we, only we can do this, well, no, we own the streetlights, we get to decide the maintenance, so it's something we're gonna think about.
So, to me, it's kind of from ninety thousand to thirty thousand a year electricity. That's my, okay, anyway, so my point was, I just wanna let the public know that, that, that part of the sales tax is really what's doing the job of keeping it going, and without it...
And that will be on the ballot this year.
We will bring it.
We will be on the ballot in November.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing we do when we pay, if we have, if I get the guys to remember, we have, uh, some big signs that say, um, this is paid by the one, those streets and the insurance, the one percent sales tax. So, so people know, hey, I, I, I've had a hand in this too, so.
And so does all of our Turks, because it's the sales tax that everybody says we should have.
That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got off my phone.
Yeah, me too. Any other questions?
Uh, just, uh, one, but probably it's not, it's not a hard one. On the salaries, you're anticipating to increase them by ten percent, is this based on the new page?
Where's that at?
Oh, salaries, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're talking about salaries.
Salaries, yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry, that's right. Uh, we added, uh, are asking for a, a part-time position in the streets department.
Okay, so you'll be increasing them by another person?
By a, by a half person, kind of, by a part-timer. Uh, and that is because if you look down at the bottom of the budget, under capital expenditures, you'll see a price of three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-four. That is to purchase a new street sweeper, which we are direly need. The one we do have, uh, it's, it kind of makes the street worse when we sweep it.
Of course it does.
Um, and, yeah, it causes more dust than, and, and even at some of our events where we will sweep before we have an event, uh, the last few years, they said, please, just don't bring the sweeper out, we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
It sounds like a jet airplane, like five in the morning, it almost like.
And this is another asset to maintain our streets. Cause when you have asphalt and you have sand and rock that goes on top of that, and just grinding it, tires going over that, it's just grinding, and it's starting to take a bit of good stuff on the top that makes the road nice and smooth and quiet. And so if we're sweeping and getting that stuff off, plus all the debris, um, that's maintaining the road, and that's also adding to, uh, increasing the life of the road. So, that's why I'm asking for, for a str, uh, street sweeper that's small enough to go into all the streets in Old Bisbee, uh, not just out more in San Jose, but it's small enough that it can do all the streets in Old Bisbee, so we can maintain even the ones, cause the truck we have now can't get into those small roads.
Use the water truck instead.
Yeah, uh, so the part timer, the part timer would be just to drive this truck.
But that's why you have to do it.
Yeah, and, and occasionally, if we need help with streets, they can, you know, do that if we need to.
So just to give you a perspective on how old the street sweeper is, it was old when I got here in two thousand and six, and, uh, the method they were using at the time was to, uh, drive the tender unit in front of the street sweeper, because the water device didn't work on a street sweeper, so they would wet the road with the water tender, and then they would sweep the street behind it, and...
Just gonna do it today.
I think I've seen, yeah, I've seen that.
Which couldn't be, I don't know that there could be a more efficient way of doing it, but we've been doing it for far too long.
And that would resolve, that would...
That would eliminate that need.
This, this truck is, it doesn't require a CDL, uh, it has so many, um, it helps with blind spots, because it's smaller, and it has like a glass bottom to where you can see stuff coming in, if there's a blockage or whatever else. There's a lot of extra features that this brings that we can, uh, it comes with an attachment, with a pressure washer that's attached to it, so we can, uh, spray off the sidewalks, uh, it, it does a lot of stuff that we can't, we don't really be able to do now, so. Uh, yeah, that, I've been on that street sweeper, I've been on the tender in front of the street sweeper, so, uh, I know how that has been, I mean, I've been, I drove that for, uh, like seven, eight years, so I don't know how that was.
One more, um, forty-five percent increase in operational expense. We're gonna be spending about twenty-two, three-eighty-two based on the first nine months, and that's gone up to forty, forty thousand. An increase of almost forty-five percent, what, what, what that entails here?
Maybe look at my notes. I have to go online, uh, the online cassette to look at what I wrote in the notes for the budget, so, one second.
Part of the help you did, the, the truck, it's probably that operation.
Cause we've been spending about twenty thousand all along, so, and just jump now, I mean, that's what you budgeted, I don't know it's...
Yeah, cause, uh, this year, we have spent, uh, if you look at the budget, this year up to date, we've spent sixty-seven thousand.
No, I'm talking operational expense. Twenty-one, forty, forty-six, uh, it's sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two.
We, we have spent sixty-seven thousand.
Well, that line I'm looking at, it says six, uh, operational expenses, it says sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven through March.
Well, that's, that's the March thirty-one number, he's probably...
And I'm, I'm looking at the more updated, uh...
Also, between March, you've, okay, well...
And this last year, we budgeted forty-five thousand.
So you've gone off a budget?
We're, yes.
You've gone off a budget, yeah?
Yes, in that line, I know.
So how much you spent so far?
I'm, right now?
So far, yeah.
Sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty.
And then why are you budgeting only forty then?
I have to see what there's, that was something between now and...
Can you just bring us, will tell us maybe?
Let me, I can look and see now the ledger right in front of me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm looking at, the internet will work with me. Well... Sorry, please. Okay, there we go.
I know there's lease payments for the...
Yeah, the truck.
...excavator, there's some other stuff, but, uh, one of the pickup trucks.
It's not, one of the new pickup trucks is gonna be in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Didn't you guys buy a bunch of signs using the line, calling the operational expense?
Um, oh, here, here was, says miscellaneous fund, final settlement regarding the retaining, oh, that was into it. So maybe we're positive sixty-seven thousand? Cause the retaining wall money went into that, so, sorry, it might be a positive sixty-seven thousand.
Off set the cost of, when you repair the wall, that'll offset the cost.
Yes, okay.
Basically, it'll come back out. Yes, so that should be a black number, not a red number.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, try, when I usually see the parentheses, it sells me out in the negative or something.
Expense cannot be black, it's an expense, it's an expenditure, how can an expense be black? Expense, you've spent money, you get money out, how can it be black? It can be positive unless...
They received it.
Then you can't call it an expense.
We received money from the insurance company that you guys approved to, from the police. So we got eighty-four thousand dollars.
So that, that will not go in here?
They haven't fixed the wall yet, once they fix the wall, it'll offset that revenue that they received. It'll come with operational...
Now, the revenue hasn't been received yet.
The revenue hasn't been received.
Well, it has been received.
And it went into the operational expense line to offset the cost when they do repair the wall.
And you have to, how can you call it an expense then? It's, it's no longer, you have to show it's an income, it's a, it's a revenue, whatever, something that's come in, then that confuses the idea of an expense here.
Well, the, the expense hasn't occurred yet, so in other words, eighty-five came in, it's sitting there waiting, and it'll come back out once the expense...
Okay, then this number we need to revisit somehow, we want to know, okay, now you're saying, okay, through March, you spent sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven, that's an expense, am I right? Then you get that money that made it positive, because you, so, it will not go in here, it has to go somewhere else. And now you're saying we want to do, uh, we want to budget for forty thousand, so...
Last year, we budgeted for forty-five thousand. I brought that down by five thousand and budgeted for forty thousand.
But what, the budget, the actual only sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven? Yeah, you can budget, I can budget whatever, but what, what did actually happen? So now you're just saying, I'm gonna budget another forty, based on what you budgeted in forty, that's my question. You know, you make the assumption based on what has incurred and what you anticipate. This is how you budget, I mean, this is how budget works, so, I mean...
Hold on, hold on. This is a one-time unusual situation, okay? So it was a wall that was, that failed, and it was the responsibility of the homeowner to repair, her insurance premium, or her insurance policy paid the, whatever amount it was, it was eighty-four thousand, so we received a check, and then when the wall is repaired, then that amount will go back to about what it was, yes.
So even if we look at, so, last, this current budget was budgeted at forty-five thousand. The previous year was at nineteen thousand.
You spent nineteen thousand?
Yes.
Previous year, and this year, you basically, based on this, unless that money that you're gonna include here, you're probably looking at about twenty-two thousand, based on average of twelve months. So, I mean, you are within, uh, I just, you know, and I'm not trying to pick here, I just wanna make sure that, that, so we know when we put numbers that we, I, at least, at least for us, you may have the ledger, but I don't have it, I don't have an explanation, and that's the reason I'm asking.
Right, and, and what you'll find after, after, everything is done, okay, this is gonna, this is gonna look right too.
Okay, well, so, so that will be a...
It's all gonna be good.
Okay.
And that was only I know who brought that up, because I was looking at another, she, for my notes, but...
Yeah, but, because you surprised me, oh, we spent sixty-seven, I said, wow.
Yeah, sorry.
You would've probably answered to me for that a long time.
I know, I, I mean, he always said, no, I spent sixty-seven, just lightly, and, and that's not, you know...
How do you like the way he does that, so coolly?
I know, like he was, oh, yeah, sixty-seven thousand, okay, all right. Okay, so we'll, we'll revisit this, I'm assuming, as the numbers adjusted, I guess.
Yeah, that'll, yeah, cause this would usually come out at about one percent or...
But just so FYI, expense is never positive, there's no such thing. You have to maybe allocate the account that has to place it somewhere, but an expense is an expense.
Well, I'll tell you what, now, we're gonna do it the way our auditor says to do it, this is the way the auditor says.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm sure the auditor's not gonna say, you know, it's lost an expense, there's no such thing, but maybe I'm wrong. All right.
Welcome to government, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Okay, anything else on this? Question?
And like I say again, just a reminder, gasoline, you budgeted less, just FYI.
Ah, guys, calm down.
Okay, all right, uh, just, just, just be careful with that.
Not fast enough.
But it will never go back.
Well, it definitely went down from when we were using, again, I'll go back to that, when we were using the wax, it was a big saving, it's coming back to having our own fuel, it was out of control.
My, my recommendation, if you guys will take, at least budget what you spend this year, not below. I mean, for me, it's fine, I'm happy that you say you're gonna spend less, but at least budget what you spend this year, don't go below this. And if the, uh, the gas goes better, hey, you'll look to...
Either that or like they're not doing anything.
Yeah.
We'll be fine.
All right.
We're just, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Until later.
We still got to raise water sanitation.
Okay, uh, Rico, um, I mean, this is kind of a fund that only happens once in a while. The revenues for Rico, um, basically come from a couple of different places, they come from, uh, auctions. Actually, a couple of different auctions, the county does an auction, anything we have in the county auction, we get a piece up, and they get a piece up. We, uh, sometimes, uh, we have a couple of our own cars that were Rico cars in our own auction, but we haven't had an auction, so, uh, there's, there's nothing there. And then county reimbursements for Rico, that's kind of a, um, when, when money is acquired through a drug bust or smuggling activity, whether it's, usually, cause, and, and it's cash through a drug bust, not drugs, not a drug bust, because the drugs get destroyed, we don't get the cash value of those, uh, we start figuring out any of that, and, uh, not illegally, you know? Those proceeds go into this fund because it's the money is um received through the Rico Act, which is federal anti-corruption. And so um it's kind of a crapshoot, I mean, I I remember. And a couple of you will remember years when there was three, four hundred thousand dollars a year that came into this fund. Uh through the sale of of seized vehicles, um and, you know, I remember one time uh the guy stopped the car. And they opened the trunk up and and took the spare tire off, there was two hundred fifty thousand dollars in it, we didn't get the whole two fifty, we had to share with the fence.
Mine.
But but I think we still got something like seventy thousand dollars out of that bust, so um we're not involved in that stuff.
So we no longer, is this?
So in 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 the event that we would end up uh you know busting somebody come, say, across the border with. A truck full of cash that's intended to buy drugs someplace else and transport back across the border, um but usually the drugs come the other way. Uh the uh, you know, uh in in past years, we've been able to detach one officer to work with the ED Act. Um and so anything that they were involved in as part of any bust at all, we shared in the bounty, so to speak. And uh but there's not a lot of that activity anymore, uh border activity here actually is. Uh I know people will disagree with what I'm about to say, but I've seen activity crossing this border in this area a lot more. Intense than what it is right now, and so with that intensity also, those things happen too. Uh we used to participate in a program run by uh the United States Border Patrol called Operation Stone Garden. Um that uh that program was operated for a good number of years, um and it had some upsides and had some downsides, some officers. Uh really were able to uh put their uh PSPRS pension at a higher level than they would have otherwise. Uh but that's in a small part, it's part of some of the problems we're dealing with now. So uh basically, we keep this account around because there are occasions where we will come in money. Um it's administered by the county attorney's office, we don't just get money, okay? Money actually goes to the county attorney's office, and then our fixing partner has to go to the county attorney and make a case for we we want to use that money, so. So it's usually, obviously, in the law, there's a capacity.
Got a lot of restrictions on what you use that.
And I don't even know anymore, but I know it's a lot stricter than it was five years ago.
My my question is, why do we keep including it in the budget since has we have not had this for years?
Just in case?
Just we're assuming, no, no, I I know in case, there's no problem with the idea of the in case, but my question is. Here we are saying we're gonna have a potential revenue of hundred thousand dollars, including it as as a revenue. I I think that's in a way that probably it's it's making our budget or the assumption of revenue to be there when in fact, this may not materialize. Unless you guys do that accounting differently, you know?
No, no, this is not different accounting, it's right in front of your eyes.
Yes.
Look at the last column, we're showing hundred sixteen thousand dollars in revenue, hundred sixteen thousand in expenditures. The 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 amount, we lead it back on the total budget of zero.
Is zero, okay, so that's.
So it's a placeholder.
Okay.
It's true. Okay, enough of that.
That's good.
Uh Bisbee Arts Commission, I should let Leslie do this one. So um if obviously uh that cigarette machine is obviously a very successful money maker.
Yes. Things in cash now.
I don't.
That's amazing.
We changed out a cigarette though, I mean.
I do I'm the one who gives them change still when you need to.
Same cigarette?
The cigar machine.
Cigar?
Yeah.
Well, that's what it says in the budget, so I guess we're okay, so. So anyway, um you know, they're they're a pretty self-sufficient group, and I like what they do, and I got no problems with this budget. It's good. Okay, housing initiative, um as you know, uh this program has been in existence now for a year and a half, two years maybe. Um so far, we have sold two, um we're going to close on the third one tomorrow. Uh Mr. Dot and his wife will occupy the third structure sold under the program, so you're, um I'm sorry, forgive me, the second structure sold. And uh we have two more under construction right now, um we've already accepted the donation of that, one of those two. Uh the fourth structure is a structure on land that we already own, um and both of those properties will probably go up for auction, Doug's already starting the process. Uh going, we have a couple phases we go through where we advertise and educate uh potential workforce buyers. Um to basically let them know that these places are available, um what the rules are governing how they're uh how they're sold. Um and then, uh of course, the the method that is in the policy is according to the act, so. So hopefully, before the end of this fiscal year, we'll get to pull a couple names out of the app and we'll get to sell a couple properties. Um but still, sales will actually occur in the next fiscal year, so uh so that's the long and the short of it, and and I don't want to worry about.
You just explain for me, because I'm being new to this, so basically, what we sell it for, we're not making any money? Are we are we generating anything for the city, or basically it goes into the?
We'll be generating a little bit, um and mostly because um several of the houses that we've already acquired, we've been required by donation. So the cost basis is zero, so if we sell the place for eighty thousand dollars. Eighty thousand dollars shows up in here as revenue, so now that revenue is intended to um be like a revolving fund, so. We'll take the revenue and we'll invest that in the next property that we're gonna make or build, and then uh. At the end of at the end of the process, we hope to make a little money, but the intention of making the money is not to make money, it's to reinvest it.
Reinvest, yeah, so the operational expense line, is this what we basically have expended uh spent on renovating the properties, or does it entail what, what's in there?
That eighty thousand is?
Yeah, yeah, actual.
I think there was uh some money given to to build the to build that.
To 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 help fix it, that's what I meant, yeah.
For repairs, I think the the house that they're building, I know we issued a check for like forty thousand recently.
Yeah, basically, what what happens is um step up Bisbee Naco is our primary contractor for renovation and and for building. And uh so what we do is we advance a uh a fund that they ask for in order to take care of the equipment materials. Uh to actually construct the property or to renovate the property, so uh the one that's under construction is at. Uh number one Cochise Row, if you want to go look at it, it's uh I think you can still walk in it, but um I think they were just about ready to rank it.
Good.
Hang the drywall, like the last time I asked.
Yellow house?
Cochise Row was there.
With yellow windows.
Cochise Row is behind the.
No, yeah, I know.
Number one.
Number one, okay, okay.
Turn turn a B and B and make your first house in the world.
The the phone stopper to you, um the other property that we're renovating right now is located in Saginaw. Uh at the corner of East Street and Highway eighty, so that one also is very close to being finished, and we've already accepted that renovation. So you're welcome to drive by, Mel, if there's.
No, yeah, it's.
Cause if there's somebody actually working on the property, when you drive by, just pull in.
Okay, right, that's it, it's good, it's.
Now, they're very happy to show their work.
Okay. And basically Doug oversees this uh uh from the city, who 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 who, how do we know, how do we follow up, who who?
Yeah, the coordinator for the city is the city planner, Doug.
And he's he's the one that, you know, just ensures that we we get enough money.
And he's also the coordinator when we when we put one up for sale, he's the one who runs it through.
Okay, so, all right.
Okay?
Um, yeah.
The miscellaneous donations. Okay, as you can see, there's a lot of different uh. You know, non-for-profit groups, uh friends groups and so forth, uh that we have in town, and uh we uh receive donations for different things. Uh we actually, I don't know if we, if that page on the website, no, sorry, I'm in the wrong city, um it's all getting old.
You tease a nurse or what?
Uh, yeah, but but it's probably a good suggestion down the line, we have on on our website in Winslow. For specific types of donations, you could donate on the website, just like you pay your uh super garbage bill, so something to think about. So anyways, you can see we get cemetery donations and pool donations and all kinds of stuff, and so this is where we record the revenue on expenditures.
So is this a million dollars, is this always?
A placeholder.
That 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 is, I understand that's um the pledge from Bisbee Odessa.
Okay, let's move on.
I thought we could end the conversation quickly. Okay, um the airport, you know, the the airport really would um struggle to exist without sponsorship in the city. Um it's hap- it happens, it so happens that we're actually doing pretty good this year by airport standards. Um usually, um we end up using the transfers from the general fund, and at this point in the year, we're doing pretty good, so. The primary source of revenue, of course, is aviation fuel and uh the uh. It it, you know, we get a lot of people to land here, um primarily because we've got the aviation fuel, so that if they do nothing more than landfill up the tank and leave. They at least come and have some money by that, so um it's actually done better than, I mean, I've seen years when it's not done nearly this well. Uh so there's some resurgence there, obviously, there's still challenges, we still have, you know, the paving issues. And the capital improvement issues that uh maybe someday we can get back to doing, um and uh but in the meantime, um you know, we're projecting. A balanced budget and the primary expenditure this year, of course, will be um the ceiling and striking in one way.
So basically, the revenue on gas, that's basically the sale price, how much, and our cost is not, that's it's not profit, that's just basically.
Yeah.
Because we have we have we have to buy the gas to sell it for that, so what 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 is our income, what's our profit on this, are we making money? Uh operation, is this fuel for resale, is that where where it comes from?
Yep.
So basically, we we, oh, I don't see one through Marsh, so fuel for resale, there's no, there's zero there.
Have you bought fuel recently?
Hmm, I think it was last year.
It was, we recorded in uh inventory though, in in the on the balance sheet, it's an asset, so when we buy it, we we record it as inventory. And then at the end of the year, um they take a measurement of how much is left, and we expense the difference.
So you wait till the end of the year to know if you've made money?
Well, they they price it at a level above what we purchase it for.
I just think we bought it back on this.
No, that's good, I just want to know how 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 the figure, I'm not questioning, I I'm how much money we made?
What you, what the, what's the margin?
Yeah, what's the margin on when you price it?
Sale price, the.
Oh, and the cost, right, I mean.
What do you sell it for and how much it costs fuel, the difference?
It's cents per gallon.
Yeah, I can tell you how much I sell it for, I don't have the price in front of me for how much I buy it from, that's four eighty eight a gallon.
You sell it for?
Yes, that's hundred octane fuel, yes, hundred N L.
And he bought it almost a year ago, so you can bet.
So you made money.
No, 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 I bought it like towards the end of last year in twenty twenty one, or beginning of January, something like that.
Yeah, I can say that when gas is cheap, that's my point.
Yeah, so.
So uh the only, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm not, basically, we look at this number and we we excited twenty five thousand, but basically, maybe after we paid for it, probably. Our what we make, maybe three, four thousand, I think, not more than that, so uh we shouldn't be excited about this.
If anybody runs a gas station, we know the margins are thin on.
Very thin, that's why I'm just saying, well, no, when the prices are up, you make good margin, that's mine, you know, you're making fifty cents, at least you should be making fifty cents to a dollar of.
Yeah, and I'll be probably looking at the gas prices around us, you know, like once a year, we we take a look or a couple times a year and see, hey, what is everybody else? Do we need to raise it, do we need to lower it?
Okay, so at at least with the airport, I think we're looking at this as as not-for-profit, and the assumption, we just basically, it's there to serve.
We'd like to be able to operate it.
That's that's basically, yeah.
In business, as far as operating it, that's the main goal, providing, we do have um resident that has a pilot school there. And does very well, he gets people from all over the country, actually, that comes to learn and to.
So we should be making money off of him, because he's making money, so what's the money, where how much are you made from him?
We get money from the hangers, um I'm not sure what we get, he gets, we admit, we money off his hanger, that's why.
Ten thousand you see is rents for the most part, from the hanger.
Yeah, hanger, we guess majority of that is him, because the rest of it is shady.
Yeah, that that is like somebody comes in, ties down for three days and pays.
He's saying he's making money, so we should be making sure we're getting some of that, I mean, because that's for commercial, he is making money, so it's no longer. I mean, hopefully, that's we not been taken advantage of, that's mine, I thi- I think this is something we'll have to look at, at at this, how much is utilizing this, because we're providing all this for him to to generate business. It's no longer a no 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 profit, it's not profit, I think.
Yes, um and he is located in the county, so I don't know if that's how that works.
Just a little back knowledge, when I was here before, we didn't have an operator out there, so it went vacant for years and years and years, and finally, somebody stepped up and decided to start running a business there. Which brings in more commerce for us, you know, and and so I think that's why we're doing better, we're selling more fuel, we're doing more stuff, because there's more activity out there. For many, many years, I remember, we had no operator.
Well, when we had FBO down there, we were paying the FBO to occupy the space and pump the fuel and so on and so forth.
Yeah, we were paying, yeah.
Cut the weeds and whatever, um most airports in the United States get payment from the FBO.
Right, and for a number of number of years, we didn't have anybody out.
My FBO up in Winslow paid the city three hundred fifty bucks a week just to exist, and uh so, but we're a different kind of airport, okay? I mean, this is very much a hobby airport, it's that, um we we had some commercial, military and um firefighting activity at the airport up there, so we could, you know, have. I mean, twenty five thousand dollars in fuel, that was a month at that airport, so it was a lot.
Uh and he does, I mean, a lot of this fuel is probably him.
So so he's doing good business up there?
But he's running the hangers too, so we're getting money from that.
Yeah, he has uh two hangers, and he's actually looking to.
Well, I'll I'll just wanna go back and see how much was, but uh later, okay, go.
I have a question, um so our credit card fees are zero now, so. I mean, I know when they feel up, they generally use a card, so how come there's no fees?
I think when they got the new fuel system out there, we went with a new um provider, and I I'm guessing the fees are charged to the customer instead of the city.
Yeah, it's right, cause we used to be with Wells Hart.
Well, um Bank of America.
Okay, somewhere.
Yeah, but generally, they still charge the one that is accepting the the credit cards.
We can put the all hundred percent of the fees back on the 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 customer, cause we don't, we don't receive any kind of charges for that anymore. Cause we don't, we don't receive any kind of charges for that anymore. We used to get a, a monthly, um, um, fee on our bank statement when we were Bank of America. We canceled all that with the new machines and we, we get no charges now.
Actually, it's better when not being, uh, it's great. It's, it's glad that, I, I like the zero here. Because, yeah, I mean, but he's doing well, so I'm not worried about him.
Don't, don't, don't change their.
No, no, I mean, that's an expense and it's zero, it's okay. I'm not gonna argue with that.
All right? Yes. Okay, now, these special vouchers and grants, why it shows up at this point in the budget, I have no idea. This is just, I always have that. You would think it would show up closer to the. So, there's not much in here, uh, there's two hundred and fifty thousand for, um, homeland security grants. And, uh, and that's a placeholder, basically. We don't have anything applied for in that. And then, of course, Department of Justice. We do receive, uh, a small amount of money for the Department of Justice. It doesn't buy all our debts, but we'll take the fifteen hundred dollars and get what we can. So, uh, better, better not.
One minute.
That's probably about right.
So is this the communication system that just, uh, we used, that's why I have it in parentheses, where it has been utilized? Or the, in the actual, uh, the communication system and it's in parentheses? What does, is this?
Negative.
Yeah.
Negative, we haven't received the reimbursement.
Okay, so that it's shown as, as, as in, in, in the negative, okay?
Yeah, when we get to two hundred thousand or whatever it is.
And the system that we just talked, spoke about, that, okay.
This has nothing to do with.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
CCOM.
Yeah.
This is hardware.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, these are radios and repeaters in town. God knows what else.
What is the one hundred club there?
Uh, I, I'll be honest with you, I've heard of the one hundred clubs before, but I don't know who they are. But we did get a grant from them. Go, go ahead.
Uh, the one hundred club is a support organization for police officers, public safety. Um, and they have, I, I guess I would compare it to, you know, like, like wounded warriors or, you know, they, they support and help with police officers. And fire too. Oh, I didn't know it was both. Okay, thank you.
Maybe we should give it a call.
All right, move into the big one, Waste Water.
Okay, Waste Water. All right, um, as you know, Waste Water has basically two components. Uh, we have the treatment division and we have the collections division. Collection sounds like a good thing until you realize what they're collecting. And, uh, the, uh, treatment division, of course, uh, for the last three years plus, um, has been by contract with Jacobson Engineering, who you're all familiar with and has made periodic presentations to council on their activities. There is about a year left in their contract, do that mean there's?
Yeah, it's pretty close, yeah.
Uh, cause you, you renewed it for eighteen months, way around the beginning of this year. So that contract is due to expire about the end of the next fiscal year. And, and this is just my suggestion. When we get to a point, uh, which probably should be a point somewhere near the fourth quarter of this year, this calendar year. Yeah, this is, um, second quarter of this, this year. That contract will be close enough to over that we'll need to make two decisions today. One decision we'll have to make is, um, do we want to continue to operate the plant using a contractor? Or do you want to go back into business or yourself? The second decision that we're gonna have to make is, um, well, it's not really a decision, but definitely, once you've made the first decision, then we'll have to commence with either putting a, uh, putting a crew back together or going out for bits, uh, competitively to contractors. Since this is one of the largest contracts that you have for operations. So, uh, at this point, we have no recommendations. We don't wanna recommend anything at this point. It's, it was a five-year contract, as, as you know, it was litigated. It found to be a five-year contract after one of our local residents ejected. And, uh, and, and you, and the court told us, told you guys to hear his case, you heard it, you decided. So we're on third legal ground for the balance of this contract. At some point, Mr. Mayor will have to put it on our radar to, I, I think this is gonna require a conversation over, um, a, a work session or something similar to that so that we can get your impressions, your ideas of how you like the service that you're being provided. How your constituents like the service you're being provided, um, and what you would prefer to do now. I will say this, there's pluses and minuses to both ways of doing business here, okay? And quite frankly, uh, the minuses are serious minuses. And so, um, some of us were here the day that plant opened. And just my personal opinion, um, it was, it was not easy to chore to operate that. So, and, uh, you know, we're, we've been talking about high turnover, turnover of other departments. Waste Water was the original involved door. And, uh, it requires a class three operator, a little bit of four. Class four, that's the highest one.
Yes.
Those folks are in short supply and, and they can write their ticket anywhere it goes on. And that's what makes it difficult. And, uh, so, and of course, through the years and nothing to do with that, but, uh, under previous administrations, we've had some, uh, well, let's just say, not so good things happened in Waste Water Plant that have resulted in investigations and other types of disinteraction. So, um, so it's something we need to think about very hard before we choose which way we're going to go. But we need to go, um, probably around the first of the year with a decision so that we can commence with whatever process we'll need to take after that. It will be a fairly, uh, intense task to re-operate that plant with our own people. Starting with hiring good people, um, and getting all the personnel stuff. And then we're gonna be doing a lot of our, uh, a, a lot of the expenses that go with, um, with operating that plant are gonna be, will be ours again. And, uh, so it's something we're gonna have to really do, uh, a good job of analyzing both ways to determine which way you wanna go. Now, having said that, I realize that, um, doing this in the first place, three and a half years ago, was it a somewhat controversial process? I guess that's the best way to put it. And, and, and this contract was not entered into with any benefits, uh, so we were here for that. Now that we've had some time with it, um, we can analyze what, and what's been good about it, what's not been good about it, and determine where we wanna go from here. But I'm thinking around the end of the year, Mayor, we're gonna have to start that process up.
It won't affect this budget, though.
No, it won't affect this budget, but, but if we don't do something by the end of the year, we're gonna be.
Yeah, but you gotta be six months ahead of us.
Right. So.
But for this budget.
We're there. Having said that, um, we'll take any questions. Matt will take any questions.
I've got one. Um, who are we paying salaries to?
Uh, we are paying salaries to our collections department. So right now, we have three guys out in the field that deal with our collections system, which is everything that is in the ground, pretty much. All our sewer pipes, all our load stations, um, that's those guys.
Fire system.
And, yes. If you maintain those fire suppressors.
Yeah, we never gave that part of the business up.
I do have, wondering why you zeroed out inventory tools. Well, there's always a problem with the camera to, to, you know, if it goes wrong, it's longer. I think that's probably why I spent three thousand, 'cause I think the camera.
Yeah, might have been a mistake. You might have been a mistake.
I might have. Hey, it's, it's my first budget, so.
He's gonna pull the old first budget.
And it's the biggest part of it, so.
You're doing good. So, Carl, you've done pretty good with that. I haven't used that yet.
Yeah.
The mayor caught you this one.
Let me, let me look at, so, see if it'll help me?
No, it could not have taken both of you and so.
It, it could have been, um, maybe I didn't say that one more.
Well, there's only like nine thousand items on here, so. I just saw that and thought.
No, we definitely need inventory tools.
Okay, so that's forty-two oh sixty, so you guys make adjustments, you just see.
I don't have a real question. Yeah, I think that entire button is just one item.
Yep.
Matt, you need three thousand or four thousand. Which is, oh, I'm trying to find it on here, but I can't even find it. Well, it's, uh, oh, five.
Forty-six oh five?
Oh, six zero, last two digits. Sorry, inventory tools. Um, we'll put, what was the last previous year, three? Well, we've got three and then previous to that, two thousand. So, probably, we can stick with three thousand. Let's just go ahead and do that. That was not hard.
Not a three and a half million dollar budget.
Just, I mean, I, I don't want to, but, uh, on the contact service, uh, and it's a contract, why, I mean, why are we going, uh, why is it going down? Seven sixty-one, uh, twenty-eight, eight hundred and fifty-nine, seven sixty-five, seven eighty-six, six seventy-one, um, for nine months, times twelve, eight ninety-four. Based on what averages, I don't know, maybe it has to do how we're paying? And then we're going to seven sixty-nine as they proposed, just. Yeah.
We were using paid info for debt collections and they took, um, a cut of what was collected. Um, and it got to the point where most of the accounts that were left were people that owed thousands of dollars and they weren't able to collect anymore. And the only way to get, get money, you know, get any kind of payment was to send them a shut-off notice. And then they would come in a payday and then the paid info would get a cut even though they hadn't really done anything. Um, so we just have stopped using it.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that's, it's not a big deal, that's just.
Well, that ComJag services cover, there's Jacobson's.
Yeah.
And the way I remember it also, every year, there's a certain amount built in for repairs. And so that number was, was changing based on what they said was required. So you saw, we spent seven sixty-five, now we're spending seven sixty-nine. So, um, actual, and then, even though the budget is seven eighty, you know, it might come out to be that way at the end, but.
Well, I guess it depends on what it spends. Okay.
It's not a very well with.
You know, now, we're gonna, we've bite at the apple here. If we decide to, uh, go out and, uh, bid for a contractor again because, uh, we have a clean sheet of paper, um, we have a, a different team, we're negotiating for the city. And, uh, I have a, uh, I have supreme confidence, um, in, in our city attorney as the chief negotiator and, uh, so.
And yourself too.
It's, it's, yeah, I, I just do what Joe tells me. The, uh, the reality is that, um, it may, the, the new one may end up being written quite differently than the last one.
I mean, City, you mentioned earlier, we have two options, either take it ourselves or stay. I think we can have a third option, like you're saying, go back and renegotiate with Jacobs, so, you know, and see if we can do a better job on, on the new contract. So we have th- three options, I think.
Well, depends on what the contract we have says, 'cause there, there might be a clause in there that allows us to negotiate.
After the, I mean, yeah.
Additional five years or what.
Yeah.
I don't know the contract that well to be able to tell you that at this point.
But it's gonna be a new contract.
Yeah.
It's gonna be completely new contract.
But I will, but I, you know, and, and I have to say that, um, um, Jacobs has been a good contractor for the city. That plant has been well-operated and well-retained. And, uh, and, but, and kind of a wild card that none of us really know, uh, just yet. And it's probably not next year, but maybe after that, for a year, maybe two years. That plant went into service in twenty sixteen. The average life of a wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, two thousand and six. Yeah, thanks for the wrinkled nose there.
I'm sitting there trying to think.
Yeah, I just, you know, aging again. So from two thousand and six to now, um, is not quite twenty years, but at the twenty-year point, um, most wastewater treatment plants are considered functionally obsolete, if not mechanically obsolete. And, uh, and that's where I have, as, as, as a non-employee, I had a little bit of heartburn when we extended the time on the length of the, uh, of the debt service that we're paying on that plant. Cause you'd usually like to clean up your debt service before you take on more. And in order to redo, you, you know, um, over a two or three-year period, once you read that, that point where the engineers say, okay, uh, this plant no long, this plant costs too much for you to operate. Now, you don't have to build and brand spanking new plant, but essentially, all the operating machinery in that plant will have to be replaced. And that's probably, you know, uh, in Winslow, we did it over three years and it was several eight million dollars. So when the time comes, I mean, this is a factory, okay? I mean, that's like how I describe these things to people. It's a factory, um, it produces a product, a product, it produces clean water. And in the process of manufacturing that product, we wear out machinery that we bought. So there's gonna be a day of reckoning and it's probably, maybe not this year, maybe not even next year, but by the time you hit the twenty-year mark, um, we're probably gonna be hearing things.
So why are you depreciating, uh, an amortized margin so we can have a fund? I mean, why are we waiting till then?
We do appreciate.
Okay, and are you allocating a certain amount every year for replacement?
We're just paying them, paying them the, the.
But the, the prob- I mean, this is, we don't wait till it happen. I think we should be allocating a certain amount every year.
Okay, yeah, we can raise the rates for a hundred bucks a month if you want.
No, we have to cut somewhere, I mean, expenses. What, what I'm saying, any, any, uh, can, any, anything that, any machinery you have, you have to depreciate and allocate, amortize a certain amount, uh, in a fund. So like you said, in two or three years we'll have to replace. Can't just wait till then and then say, hey, you know, we need three or four million. This is my point. I mean, is there any way you can start planning?
It's a very good point and in a perfect world, it's absolutely correct, okay? This plant has had a life in a less than perfect world. And the financing has been, um, in a less than perfect environment. And so you are near. And so you are nearing the end of the functional life of a plant that you're still making payments on, uh, for a good number of years. So, um, now, I heard two things here, I heard the mayor say, you can charge more, and and and, you know, and what Carrie said a few minutes ago about not having the ability in our current revenue stream to put money aside to do that now. If if, I I know s- some of my, uh, uh, more seasoned colleagues will recall, um, that when we started operating that plant in two thousand and six, um, we actually adjusted the rates by a small amount every single year. And that not only accounted for increases in personnel costs and so on and so forth, it it left us with a little debt at the end of the year. And, um, I don't know, when's the last time we had an increase in sewer line?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen. You've gone an extraordinary number of years without an increase. Now, part of that, part of that, quite frankly, is due, when when you did the, uh, when you did the refinance, you actually lowered your debt service, so that allowed you to not to do that for a good number of years. That's the primary reason. But, you know, every year, it went up one percent or two percent or three percent, depending on what finance director recommended to us in order to operate the facility in a fashion in the manner which you're describing, okay? Since we haven't had an increase in since twenty thirteen, uh, you know, there's no opportunity to do that unless you wanna change.
The the other reality is when it was refinanced, there was one million dollars set aside in the bank for future, and that was eaten up by the refinance.
The reason I'm saying this, like, and and based on what you just said, Steve, I mean, we'll have to deal with this. And the way, you don't you don't wait till then, like you said, it's gonna be in two or three years we'll have this amount. Sooner or later, we can, we have to pay for this. And then we need to make sure it doesn't come where we just, you know, be prepared for this from now, based on what I.
Then one of the things that will be part of negotiating with any contractor, if we choose to go that route, is gonna be to account for the equipment replacement that's gonna go on during the period of that contract.
And what I know from working under the old Anco Fielders division is, which was a handle of wastewater, is you can't shut it down and then just reduce it.
Exactly.
It it's still working every single day, and so you can't take basins away and just say, oh, we'll just, we'll work on this for a month or two.
Yeah.
And so, it's a really complicated system to to keep running, it's like your car can't stop.
But I I like what I just heard from Steve. With the new contract, that's something that we have to make sure that.
That's part of the.
If that's the way you choose to go in the future.
I think you have to, I mean, but we don't wait till the last minute and say, hey, you know, we need three million dollars.
So, just so you all know, that's gonna happen. Anything else on the wastewater plant?
Not waste.
We really got a lot of.
Let's, uh, let's pick up the trash. Not too much to say about this one, um, except that, uh, um, the new vehicles that you purchased are making life a whole lot better, uh, for the operators. And now that we've had a chance to get everything in place, um, you know, we were getting a lot of calls, of course, when we put the new buckets in, uh, in Warren, and, uh, those calls have dropped to near zero. At this point, um, we've had some interesting conversations with some of the residents there, um, you know, we've we've been a little bit, I don't wanna necessarily call it innovating, but who'd have thought that people just wanted to paint their garbage can? And 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 why not? And and there's a couple of interesting examples.
Interesting is nowhere to say.
Uh, now, we we did ask them to make sure whatever they did, that they could show it to their mother. But, uh, yeah, of course, somebody had to come back on that one when I said it, but, you know, I mean, in other words, be respectful.
And I think fine, let's say.
Yeah, I haven't, there's not, really, there's not that many people that have, uh, but the ones that have haven't been anything bad. Some people just paint them a whole other color and that's it.
Yeah, and and Matthew has done, um, and Logan, uh, done a great job with interfacing with those folks who we were hearing about that may have difficulty getting their trash container from the house to the curb. And, uh, so I think everybody that's had a request has had some.
Yeah, or.
Some form of, and, you know, it's highly individual service. Um, and I think you're even doing individual pickups on those now, aren't you?
Uh, yes, we, well, we're getting transitioned into that, but we will be. Another thing that I found out with haveling and the garbage, um, I was talking, we were invited to the, anyways, we were invited to a committee and, um, one of the committee members said, the, um, this natural sprit, or the spring, uh, do you, uh, bar soap, what is that called?
Irish.
Irish spring.
Thank you.
Well, she sprinkles it in front of her yard, uh, in front of her bushes and her roses and the havela, it won't go past it. So smear that all over your trash can.
Yeah, but then y'all leper conter everyone.
Yep.
Well, I use it in the shower, I don't know why they don't attack me.
There you go. So, and it helped with the deer, she said.
Well, and, you know, and that was a little bit, I mean, the whole havelina thing was a little bit interesting because, um, you know, uh, well, Edna and I, uh, can wake up in the morning and see eight or ten havelina in our yards. And, uh, um, I have yet to, you know, be attacked, or for my container to be attacked by a havelina. And I don't know, I don't think you have either, uh, nor any of our other neighbors, so, uh, maybe they're just more aggressive havelina in Warren, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys are all in the church.
Oh, no. No, there's 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 still, there's still some T-bones in my trash. Minus the B.
Minus the B.
See?
I've got a question.
Sure.
So, on the, um, for recycling, um, uh, attendants or whatever you wanna call it, do we have enough recycling going on? Is this all they do, or do they also have other duties?
The, uh, recycling employees?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, I think we have, let me look at the tops here, may try. Um, yes, we have four recycling coordinators, three full-time and one part-time. Um, we actually have two part-timers. Oh, sorry, yeah, there's one in sanitation, one in recycling, sorry, I didn't see that. Um, one of the recycling, uh, guys does do a lot of my general maintenance stuff for, like, he's been, uh, he was a big opponent of getting the trash can, the trash cans out, uh, to customers, and he does my, some maintenance and stuff on the dumpsters, and he's my go-to for kind of just getting random stuff done, and he's also over the recycling.
Okay, but the other recycling coordinators?
Mm-hmm.
What do they do?
Uh, so we have, on each, every day, uh, well, Monday through Thursday, we have two stations open. We have the main one across the street, and then we either have one in Warren or one in Old Bisbee. Uh, and so, we have, we have one heat station here and one stationed, and whatever day that the other station is open. Uh, we have manned, um, recycling stations. Um, so that's, you don't have everybody just putting glass in the cardboard and and aluminum cans in the plastic. It's a lot better.
So there's really sort advantages.
Yeah, otherwise, we just have a mess in this, and that's what we got with before, it was, we spent so much time on sorting everything out, uh, that's what took up most of the time.
So that's two of them, and the third one is your go-to guy.
That gets everything done.
Bails everything else and handles it on the vacation.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause then I also, that person that is my go-to guy, he also fills in for the old Bisbee route plan. I have guys out, um, he'll fill in there as well.
And who does the recycling at the farmer's market on Saturdays?
Uh, one of my part-time.
That's the one.
Yeah.
I see, so are are they, the attendant down here, is that one responsible for all of the debris that's lined up on the fence and?
No, most of that is from the transfer station and stuff. Because a lot of our, most of our dumpsters have lids on them and with the ones with the paper and stuff. So, most of that, but we still will help, uh, keep that up and stuff, but yeah, for the most part. Because if you drive on the backside, you'll see that the whole backside is opened up, there's no doors, it's just one big, big, open, huge area of space.
Okay, and how often do we take the recycling, like the newspapers, the boxes, the glass, how often do we take them?
Uh, we take our, a truckload probably once, maybe twice a month, and then once a month for a blast up to the Phoenix.
Are we making any kind of profit on the recycling?
I haven't run a, uh, balance on that in a while, so before, it's it's.
Here today is twenty-nine nineteen, that's March.
Huh?
Right here, revenue is twenty-nine nineteen for March.
But versus expenditures, that's.
Oh, twenty-nine nineteen, yeah. Um, and then you see that annual passes are, that's what people, so we have people that come from out of the city limits to recycle here. So they pay the same amount as what our residents pay in order if they want to recycle. Um, it doesn't, uh, I haven't looked at it, like I said, in a while, uh, before, uh, it's, it's not, it's kind of an upside-down, we're pretty much upside-down, but that's the only way we can stay up is when we, and that's why we, um, have it where our residents pay for. Um, so if people, and I've had people, well, I don't recycle and I don't wanna pay for it, I'm like, that's fine. I I told, I've told many people, go talk to your council members, because you guys are the ones that make, say whether we want recycling or not recycling or how much or whatever, so.
But but this was the first offer from when we had ten recycling. Now we no longer have this, now we only have one can, we put everything in that can. So are you telling me, once we take those back, then your people go through them and 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 separate? Or what, I mean?
They used to.
So what they're doing now, are are these the same people we had when we had recycling, actual recycling?
Yes.
So, we're no longer doing this, so?
What's the, uh, typical fee per ton?
Uh, sixty-five dollars a ton.
So it was minus zero this weekend?
Yep, sixty-five dollars, yeah, that was me.
Yeah.
Um.
You have to separate it out yourself.
We still, yeah.
You'll put it all in one can and call it recycling.
We still have to get it from.
Glass out.
The bins and and bail it.
But we used to have bins for the recycling, now we don't.
We do.
You have to bring them down to.
Bring them down here, yeah, so bring them down here.
Or 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 to one of the other two stations.
Yeah, we have two other stations, one right on Vista, Vista Park. And the other one's in at the sewers.
And I talked to that about, I I would like to get some dumpsters back out there strictly for cardboard only, that you just have a slot, so you have to break your boxes down and shove them in, so you don't fill all the garbage. I'd like to try that in a couple of places, they still see a lot of cardboard, and it doesn't get recycled, and that is one of the things we pay money off of. And weighs a lot that goes in the waste.
Yeah, glass is one of the heaviest, well, besides food, in in the trash, in, uh, in the waste stream. Um, we've been, when we've been, before we were going to be switching over to the cans and the red, the trash cans for the residential areas, we were planning on getting, um, uh, trash cans to, um, the, all the, the bars and the restaurants around town to collect the glass. That came up and we weren't able to get onto that yet, I'm still planning on getting that, we're we're trying to get to that point, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Because Matt, right now, most of the establishment businesses, like the restaurants, they are not recycling, you just empty everything. So that's why I'm asking, I mean, yeah, some some people may go down, but really, it's so inefficient right now, and we don't get them what we're supposed to, so.
Well, you wanna factor in one more thing, which is not necessarily tangible, but but it kinda is.
Yeah.
Uh, every, every ton that gets recycled is sixty-five bucks we don't spend.
I mean, I I don't know if you've been there, Mel, but I've come over here at least, every time I go to Safeway, but there was always somebody.
I think it's what it meant to recycling.
So we 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 do, my wife does, but I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what she out there.
Oh, you've been, you said we do, and then you said my wife.
Well, she's the one that.
It's that house in his pocket.
There's a big thing with it, is the way that we, it was u- used to be done, is we couldn't, there was no way of saying, oh, you can't put your your trash bag in the recycling dumpster. Half of the trap, the dumpsters that were in the neighborhoods, half of them were full of trash. And then the top half was recycling, that our guys would get out every other day.
The top half was the one that blew out.
Yes.
If you wanna talk about a system out of control, let's go back to having, uh, all those little meat stations, fifty or sixty of them all over town. It was a disaster.
Um, it was, and then you have to go and sort that, hours and hours of sorting that, um, and then, and then bailing that on top of it. Um, before, I have, I wouldn't even be able to have my, my third guy or whatnot be able to do any extra stuff because they were full-time, plus we had inmates too, at the recycling center when we had that, we had out of eight to ten inmates there as well.
The numbers, and what was Ann was saying earlier, the numbers are not matching up. If we're saying, oh, there's a lot of people are coming, and there's lines of people, but they're, we're hardly making any.
It it doesn't make much money.
Yeah.
It it's not, you don't recycle to make money.
It's not, no, you don't do this to make money.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, you're saying there's a lot of people are recycling, but it's not showing here, that's all.
No, no, you got, well, not especially, you can't look at this and say how many people are recycling, because it isn't, no matter. I would say if you cut half of the people out recycling, you're gonna cut now fifteen hundred dollars, well, that, you don't even know that, so.
Usually when I go to the recycling center over here, it's, uh, ends up being, uh, it's like going to the post office, you end up seeing your neighbors and your friends.
Every time I've been there, I've had, I've had, there's usually two cars in front of me or whatever. I just know that it's a lot more than I thought, and.
And this is.
But I would like to get cardboard, more cardboard, if you put the correct bins in, it won't fall and fall in garbage and will and will.
Keep the right lids.
And I think that you'll, we'll start to try to, I, we don't need one in every neighborhood, like you said, but in several good spots, I think people will be much more likely coming out of the post office.
I can't do that.
Like, I can always be lucky and.
Yeah.
Around the post office.
Anyway, so that's my.
That I can't do right now because I don't have dump dumpsters, I'm just rounding around right now for dumpsters. So, I'm gonna have to probably come in the next, not next council meeting, but next, uh.
What, you got Cia dumpsters out there, there's a lot of, I mean, oh, wait.
Go back to Naca.
I've been over there, there's a Cia dumpster, isn't there?
Uh, not our new ones, no.
Oh, okay.
There's none back there.
No, I didn't.
Didn't they all go to Naca?
I'm saying go back to Naca and get a couple of dumpsters.
Oh, we still have a bunch of those, but we wouldn't be able to pick them up.
Yeah, but you could, well, we can open up the pockets on.
We have to do it by hand.
Well, but when you dump a cardboard bin, you're not putting it into the normal trash truck, right?
It's very possible that we could.
I kinda wanna remind everybody that we're we're not.
Yeah, we're.
Not here to run the city.
We're never gonna get out of here.
You're about the city, yeah. We can definitely have a special session on this or whatnot.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's a matter of fees, that's what we're, that we're talking about.
Again, I'm sure there hasn't been an increase in, in, uh.
It was a couple of years ago?
Couple of years ago? You saw the three. So whatever we're doing, we're not increasing the fees as frequently as we did ten, twelve, and fourteen years ago. I I don't know if that's a reason to celebrate or if that's a reason to wonder why we're not doing it better, so, take a pick. But it's a conversation for a little bit. Public Works Grants. Not much here.
Okay, so we have the Old Bisbee Sewer Lateral, um, a grant that we are going to be, uh, going out for, or, yeah. I can't remember, uh, nowadays, what we're doing with the grants, uh, but it's engineering for five hundred thousand, uh, proposed is what we're trying to get, for, and that's to replace the the laterals in Old Bisbee. For, and that's to replace the, the laterals in Old Bisbee. Uh, we replaced the mains, uh, back when we did the plant, right? Uh, so those are still doing good. Um, and so we have nothing of problems with our Old Bisbee Sewer Laterals. Uh, that's what takes up a lot of my, the collection guys' time. Is, uh, the Old Bisbee Sewer Laterals. Uh, we get calls and calls and calls on that from back and back and stuff. So that is something that really needs to get taken care of. And, uh, and then the next one is the Bisbee ethylene upgrade to A plus. Uh, that, um, involves, um, bringing, purchasing a filtration system. Uh, and installing it, um, at the wastewater plant. And that gets us up to A plus water, which is the best water you can get at a wastewater plant. Um, I, well, maybe you can get A plus.
Best water you can get at a water treatment plant.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's similar to that. Right now we are, uh, and this is for our benefit and also for the green brush draw. And also for the agreement we have with Cochise County that they are wanting to pump the, our ethylene to the San Pedro. So, uh, the five hundred thousand should, uh, is what we were quoted for engineering and installation.
I thought we were told way back when that we had what the, the B rating or whatever, but that it was actually A, the A plus.
Well, this, this is the problem with A D E Q, okay? So we build a plant to process water to a B plus rating, okay? And yet we still are test, testing water A or A plus.
Yes.
That's not good for A D E Q. We've got to put in the equipment to certify A plus water in order to get the A plus rating.
Just because you produce it doesn't mean you get the rating. You have to, I don't. Well, hey, come on, it's a government program.
They should fund it.
They should. And we actually met with A D E Q last week or the week before.
Week before.
Oh, yeah.
The week before.
Two weeks.
Mayor was in the meeting too and, uh, they kind of surprised us a little bit because, uh, um, we think we can get, we think we can get that. Why it's, the reason it's hidden this, on this page is because we think we can get the whole thing on it, yeah.
Well, that would be okay.
Yeah, so they were actually kind to us.
Wow.
Yeah, they didn't come in with a notice of violation.
Yeah. And the, the, the Old Bisbee Sewer Lateral is just for, that five hundred thousand is just for engineering for that.
The others are another grant.
Yeah, that's, uh, Old Bisbee Sewer Lateral's production is going to be separated in order to twenty-five and twenty-four. That's out there anyways. Go ahead.
Say something about pumping it to San Pedro?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a contract with, with county that we've already, that was signed years ago. That if they can find the money to put the line, put the line in, they will take a certain amount of our ethylene and pump it right to the border of it. And because the driest part of the San Pedro is from the Mexican border into Palominas or the other.
And they buy the water they.
Yeah, it's not free. They buy it.
Yeah, they buy it.
What does, how does that impact the water usage around here, et cetera?
It's water that we're already making, you know, from the sewage.
Yeah, they're basically.
Instead of dumping it into the green brush draw and, and having the, the cows drink it and get mad and sick and the guys mad.
We, we are, we are in the upper San Pedro basin, okay? Bisbee up to the ridge in Mule Mountains is in the same basin as the river itself. So the water that Arizona Water Company sucks out of the ground is the same body of water that's in the San Pedro. Because San Pedro, San Pedro is not a, a, a river that gets its flow primarily from runoff. It gets, what you see in the San Pedro, when you see water in the San Pedro is groundwater, okay? In order to keep that groundwater high enough for it to be a free flowing river, we have to make sure that we don't lower the aquifer to a point where it goes dry. Um, there's a, a lot of complications to that politically that we won't go into tonight. But what we have right now is an agreement with Cochise County. Uh, they are working to build a pipe that will connect to our, um, our pipe at the end, at the end of the wastewater treatment plant. Transport the water that came from the aquifer back into the aquifer at a different location. And that will help to keep the water table up. Right now it's flowing into the lad farm, basically the green brush draw and staying right where it is. So it's percolating in the ground. So basically you're, you're, you're working all within the same aquifer, same body of water. Uh, but we get paid for it and over a period of time, all of our costs are recovered and we make a little money. And, um, we can use that for, um, improvements in the plant if there's enough. So it's like the cycle of life. You just, you're taking the water out of the ground and you're putting it back. After you've used it.
After you've cleaned it up. But now we're still selling our ethylene to Greenport, correct?
On periodic basis.
Yeah, they started up again recently.
Our current agreement with, uh, with the county is to sell what, up to two, two hundred acre feet?
Yeah, something like that.
Our, our average annual production is three hundred fifty acre feet. So the contract we have currently doesn't use all the water that we can produce. And, uh, now, we will be working sometime in the next year. Uh, if you remember when we, when we did the agreement in twenty nineteen, I had to be there for that. Um, that five-year agreement contemplates a twenty-five-year agreement. Sometime in the first five years, we'll renegotiate the contract with the thought that hopefully by the time we negotiate a twenty-five-year agreement to sell water. Um, we will have at least the plans for a pipeline to transport the water. Pipeline's not our responsibility. The construction of the pipeline is not our responsibility.
The pumping's not our fault.
So, so anyway, all of that is yet to work out. But what they wanted to do is they wanted to get an agreement with us while they were working on building the rest of the system. And they agreed to pay us, uh, in the meantime for that. Uh, incidentally.
Did we get a check?
Today.
Oh, three years late, but.
Upon signature, upon the signing of the contract, we were supposed to be paid thirty thousand dollars and they forgot.
Yeah.
So I got a call from Mark Abel, who was wanting to talk about the next agreement, getting it started. And I said, do you remember giving us that thirty thousand dollars? And he says, you know, I'll have to check on it. And so he called back an hour later and he said, would you send us an invoice? And so Kerry got his invoice out the same day. We got the check today.
But wait never.
So, and of course that money goes into this fund.
Capital brooms?
No. No, comes from wastewater, goes to this. Okay, um, let's move to the Queen Mine because Fort Doug has been sitting here all night.
He's always so cautious.
Bring it up the rear. This is kind of a happy one.
It kind of, well, you know, maybe next year, let's just do Doug first.
Yeah.
So, um, as you know, um, in just a moment of history, um, we used to run a Queen Mine tour and it was just a Queen Mine tour. Um, it was the, the changing room, uh, in, in a somewhat barren state than what you see today. Um, operated, um, and I can't even remember who the Queen Mine manager was, but he was deceased before he got hired.
Yeah.
And, uh, and you may remember who that was, um, but, uh, not to make any reference, not to make any reference.
Probably ready.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, um. So anyway, we, we, we created a need to, uh, that created a need to hire a new Queen Mine tour manager. Well, uh, we were fortunate enough to be able to hire Doug. And, uh, and with Doug's background in mining and Doug's background at Cartridge Academy. Um, he basically in the first couple of years that he worked for us transformed that. Not just the experience of the mine tour, but also, um, the, uh, the, what we call the changing room, which is the big building. Um, and he turned the gift shop from a shelf with one coffee cup and one T-shirt on it to what you see today. So it's been amazing transfer, transformation, which has not only, uh, improved bottom line on the tourist side. It's also improved bottom line on the retail side, so. Um, I always want to say that because Doug was one of, uh, first people that we hired after I came to work here. And, uh, so he's now eclipsed me, uh, in, in time served because I left for five years. But, uh, so, um, he is primarily responsible, not just for that success of the Queen Mine tour. But, um, he's also been a more than gracious host for over a good number of years for the, um, uh, for the visitor's center. Uh, which went away from there for a while and now we're happy to have him hosting us again, so.
I'm glad to have him back too.
It was a great, it was a great relationship and it was just complained about because it wasn't in the middle of downtown. And so as, as we look towards moving a visitor's center on the main street, we can't forget that relationship and how well it works for us moving forward. So having said all that, um, uh, this, of course, this is a, a revenue and expenditure budget. We can see the revenues are projected at, uh, one point three and expenditures likewise. Doug, go ahead.
Questions?
You just want questions?
Go for it.
I think you know, yeah. Uh, excellent job, by the way. I looked at the increases, amazing. I mean, great operator. My only question is, you've done such a good job, why are you projecting to have a decrease of, uh, on sales of merchandise of thirty-four percent? And on tours of forty-two percent? Why? And why did you want to go down?
You know, you're predicting, because this is different than other, you know, city or, where you're, you're trying to predict the economy and how it's going to go. And with, I was predicting increases in inflation, gas prices coming up. I'm predicting that tourism was going to slow down for this, this company.
I, I totally agree. I'm, I'm in the business.
Yeah.
But I think, um, and I'm sure, I'm sure you're going to supersede those numbers. You're just not giving yourself a really, um, you've done a good job. You're going to keep this, but you, you've got, you can go within ten percent. But going down thirty-four percent on merchandise and forty-two percent on tour, I think you are shorting yourself here. I, I believe maybe you may, you may go down about ten percent, but not forty-two percent.
We can try that, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
You know why I'm saying this? Just because I, that's my field. I mean, you've done such a good job. You've increased to twenty-one. Uh, I could, I could see, and I agree with you, I could see a decrease maybe of ten percent, but to just go down thirty-four percent, you're shorting yourself. And, uh, I'm sure you know your business because, let me tell you, you are doing an excellent job. That is a great oper, operation here, just looking at the numbers. But don't short yourself, Doug. Uh, go within ten percent, not thirty-four percent and forty-two percent. You're shooting yourself in the foot.
Yeah, I can agree with that. I just, with it and you'll look at.
Beyond.
To, to give you examples is like for the last two years, normally in a budget you can actually relate to those. This one you can't because of COVID.
Yeah, what? Yeah.
And when I was doing this budget, the world was still pretty, you know, how things were going to pan out. Okay, and that's why it's that way because we didn't know that at that time, uh, Omicron was starting to pull out and where was this going to go?
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
It's just, it's a matter of just trying to predict.
Yeah.
The future and it can get real finicky. Yeah. This is my Canadian tourist.
My recommendation, visit, visit the thirty-four percent. Any budget, when you're talking about this, stay with any ten percent. This will be my recommendation.
Yeah.
I think you're shorting yourself. You've done an amazing job. You're going to keep customers. There's no way you've gone, uh, this year you projected, uh, the first, the first nine months, you've done four hundred and twenty-two. If we just keep, and I, I, the, the sales are slowing. There's no question. I know this. But you're going to do over five hundred thousand in merchandise, I predict.
Yeah.
In three months, because you have three months, uh, that you left out of the budget. Uh, and on tours, you're going to do about six hundred, not thirty, let's say six hundred and twenty. And don't, don't, don't short yourself. Uh, I would highly recommend that you revisit those numbers.
Yeah. I can tell you right now, it, it's cool.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I can tell you that too myself, but you know, it's within ten percent.
Yeah.
You know, retail and, and business may go within ten percent, but when, when you, you usually just, I think you, you get a little scared here. Don't be scared.
Yeah, cause I.
Don't be scared, Doug. You, you'll do well.
Yeah.
So give yourself at least, do it within ten percent. This will be my recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you. And everything else is great. You're mad, you're, the only, the only question I may have, which we don't have, what, what's, what margin are you making on those sales? What's your margin?
It depends on the item.
No, overall, when you add everything up, what's your margin?
I'm not so sure we need to be revealing trade secrets in public.
Well, uh, I'm just, well, we, we don't have to treat, uh, in public, but.
Yeah, you can come up.
I would say, I, I would make sure, you know, profit more.
Oh, we are.
I will come and, I will come.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Of course. But you've done well, you've done well.
Okay, anything else? Mind you guys, Doug's been waiting.
No, yeah.
What, what, I mean, you just got, you do all the, not new, you all do all the.
Yeah.
But you have, I think there was something in here about, what else was your upgrade plan or was?
I thought of the capital.
Yeah.
Uh, the capital was for the van upon the dump.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, it's been six years straight now.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Greenport's not going to replace that.
No, and it's a twenty-week lead time to get it. And so if we were to lose it today, we'd actually shut down for twenty weeks. So I want to have one just sitting there that I can go ahead and just walk it out. And part of this, part of the lot improvement.
You want to remember one year you were saying bathrooms upgrade.
Uh, I don't want to bring that one up again.
Actually, um, there's, uh, on the art, art list, there's money for restroom upgrades. Not just the Queen Mine, but, um, the other, the other was downtown.
Okay, that's where it went. All right, that was online. Can't let you go out.
Since, since you're all employees of the city, Doug will offer you a Queen Mine tour at Shell at the regular price.
And really, if you talk to them, it's a very interesting thing. Cause every morning they walk through and, and check all the phones and everything. It's quite a, quite a fun to actually walk through it and then go out the emergency tunnel.
Just like an upgrade.
You might, you might even let you do that when suddenly you're like, you need, so it's, it's, and do it before the rainy season. Because then you got to put your muck lucks on.
All right, uh, the next one is miscellaneous grants.
Yeah, we think we can finish this.
Yeah, we're going to finish tonight.
Let's get it done.
So in this one is grants that don't quite fit in any other category. And, uh, so you can see there. The big one is, uh, the Bisbee Bike Aid Grant. There have actually been two grants that have been, there are two grant applications that have been filed for that particular project. And, uh, so, um, you know, whether, whether or not those are funded is just like everything else. I don't know, I was going to feel for that one because it's not an application to be built. And then library grants, um, we always, uh, keep a reasonable amount in library grants because, um, he's been very fortunate with, um, local grant orders for the past year. Um, Freeport McMoRan, um, he did, they got their own COVID grants, okay? I forget how much it was, but he got, it was not a small amount. And, uh, so, um, we, that's, that's his number. That's what he wants. That's the goal he wants to get, so.
Real quickly, what, we have a science grant, but I mean, that's not part of this anymore, is it? I mean, it's not, it's zeroed out now.
No, we added one of that years.
Yeah, so that's not, that's, that's why I'm more concerned.
Yeah, seems to me, wasn't there a grant that got them open for?
Yeah, but it doesn't, but it doesn't, it won't be running through us if they get another grant. We don't have.
Not likely. Unless you watch it.
You know, there's another one that they're working on, it's going through the school.
Ah, okay, that's.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. What is the probably Queen Miranda project? When they re-give the balcony, they did a lot of work on it with handicap ramps up.
Yeah, it's the second and third floor deck.
Putting other ratings so kids will fall over there.
Those should be being installed right now.
Think about it down at work, I get people, they're always confident about the indoor balcony and. Lot of, lot of visitors really appreciate that.
Right, you're calling all that's out there now, what you have to.
You like to have the assemblies if you want to sit there and have a stand.
Listen to the portrait.
So, so because of all that, it's now.
Anything else? There are our.
Okay, yeah, of course, you're familiar with our votes. As you can see, there's a considerable list of money that you have approved to spend this fiscal year. And there, there probably going to be a little bit more before we're done in a year. I was thinking it would be, they wrote $365,000 by the end of the fiscal year that we would spend for the first year's allocation. So that will leave a balance, as we discussed last night. It will be, it will leave a balance that will become part of the fund balance and then we'll receive the second allocation of $872,000, probably on July 2nd.
So it's happening? And they're not, I mean, it's going to come?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's not like something that's changed their mind or?
No, you know, I just wish all the rest of the COVID money was as easy to get as this was. But the, now, the list that we compiled early on actually contained more than $872,000 worth of goods, services, and projects. Much of it, larger ticket items that required a little bit more work to get it done, engineering and so forth. So we were given five years to spend this allocation by the federal government. So there's absolutely no hurry to spend it. And a lot of opportunity to get it and get it right. You know, two, one of the things that we put on the list early on was air conditioning units for the library. We've spent some time thinking that process through. And what we have, as part of our analysis, we discovered that a likely outcome of simply replacing the swap coolers with air conditioning units was going to be a need to structurally reinforce the building in order to carry the additional weight that it's not carrying now. That morphed into a process where we thought, well, maybe we shouldn't put units on the roof at all and find some other way to do it. And then we decided to engage the services of contractors as part of a bidding process to recommend to us what they would do on the building, okay? And so that's where we are right now, except that the state parks called me last week. I've got an old friend up there and he says, I got $100,000 for HVAC units on any building that's listed on the National Register of Astoria Places. Now, it's not slammed up, but almost. And so we kind of turned the rudder a little bit. And now we're in the process of, of, of applying for that grant. And if we're successful, that $100,000 will probably cover most, if not all, of what we were going to spend on the art money. So in the event that that's the course of events, then that's going to free up some of the art money that you've already decided to use. And we can rethink some other stuff. At a point in time after the first of the fiscal year, we'll want to do another work session once the money's allocated and we know exactly how much money we've got moving forward to review that list, decide, you know, what we're going to do, what we're not going to do, any new ideas that you may come up with that we may want to add to the list that's not there, not there at the present time, so. We've done a little bit of that, of course, in small quantities, because, you know, we put some money in there to buy automatic fibrillators and we liked them so much that we decided to buy more and improve that, so. And that's, you know, one of those decisions that, you know, as, as, as I, as I told Lieutenant Klein, the life you save may be my own, so. So a very wise investment. So, so that's a process that we'll be going through. And there's really not, I mean, not too much else to say about this unless there are any questions.
I've got a couple. Well, one is not a question, one is a title on the Bisbee Pride. If there's an in, in this, can we clean that up? And then, do you know if the mining museum has fixed the elevator yet?
It's, it's been worked on, but not completed. I, it's the same contractor that we use for the library elevator. And the explanation that I received was that they're waiting on parts. They've done most of the work, but they're just waiting on a few parts to finish the job. But yes, they did commence with the repairs. Okay, that's good. Let's do debt service fund. If you're in your favor. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to direct them to Kerry.
Can you just explain that to us for the details?
It's basically for our financing payments on equipment. So anything that was purchased for streets or the general fund, like the Caterpillar.
Yeah, Caterpillar, excavator.
Excavator, there's, I did the increases, 6,800 for the new parks truck that's coming in, or 5,200 for the parks truck and 6,800 for the streets truck. So I do need to make those changes.
So is there interest to pay on the loans or whatever, the financing?
That's the principal and interest payments.
Anything about that?
Okay, which one?
Yeah, that's basically the same thing. That's principal and interest on the waste water plant. Solar and the refinance.
And I know Steve mentioned it earlier, we're still paying for it. How long? I mean, is there an idea, when will this, what's the debt?
2032 or something like that.
Before it's paid up? It's just a question, on some of these debts, can we, I mean, is there any way, like, when we make our payments, when we make a double card payments or double to, to expedite? Is there any way we can sum up those debts, like, we have extra money to make extra payments? So we're not, we're not, I mean, I paid before, is that allowable? I mean?
Well, I'm going to give you a short answer to the first question, the answer is no.
We can't?
No. And now, the, the second question that you asked, the answer is yes.
We can't.
So, you know, you, you budget to the limit of your revenues, and this is part of the limit of your revenues. And so in order to, if you wanted to accelerate your debt service, you would have to find the revenue someplace. And in, in some of these cases, it's going to be in enterprise funds that your only option is to increase your fees.
That's where the money comes from for enterprise.
That's right.
Doesn't come from taxes. Well, it does have half a percent.
Well, yeah, wastewater is half a percent, it's.
It's bank credit.
Yeah. Maybe something down the line, we may want to talk about because.
So when you come under budget, in any of the enterprises, when you come under budget, a saving has occurred? Or is it?
I wouldn't necessarily call it a savings, but you end up with a balance.
Yeah.
And that balance goes in on the balance sheet to your book. It's listed in your balance sheet.
Yeah, okay.
That's fund balance.
Yeah. And we cannot utilize these balances to pay, to make payments?
If, if you're, if you were to be in a position where you had a super large fund balance in wastewater, for instance, okay, because that's where most of your debt is. You know, council could act to make an accelerated payment or accelerated payments from the fund balance. That's your decision to make as mayor council.
So it's feasible.
And so, yeah, it's not locked in there forever. You can spend it. But normally we like to maintain, as, as we talked about when Kerry presented the reserve, the reserve policy at the last council meeting. We want to keep that reserve, but if the balance becomes so high that, let's say, we can see our way to pay something off in a year or something like that, and, and, and still keep three months of revenue in there, that would be a decision we could discuss.
Okay, and that's the reason I'm asking, because some, like, some of the enterprises, we, we have a balanced fund. And money is losing value as we go. I mean, it may be wise, because we have to think outside of the box, yes, sometimes.
Anyway, lower rates.
Okay. And, and this is why I'm asking, that's a good answer. We, we can do that. It's not like, oh, we can't. And like, we look at this money just sitting and, for example, with the mine group, for example. We have money that's just sitting there. Some of that money is just not earning anything, or barely anything. And why don't we, as council, and start thinking of? I'm not saying for us to make a decision now, but maybe it'd be viable for us to look.
But there's no debt to pay off there.
You can't move it.
No, 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 no. Not for there, but we can transfer it, that's why, you know, we can move it. And, and I think I spoke to Steve and to you Ken at one time and said, that's not, it's up to us to.
It's legal to move it by active council, it's an extremely rare occurrence. I think all of us who've been around a while would agree that it's a, it's a rare thing.
Think outside of the box. All right, thank you.
Okay, Bisbee Bus, we get towards the end, folks. Did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I had that page open, I was ready to go. Okay, the youth fund, it really hasn't been doing much in the last several years. There was a corpus of $100,000 that was given to the city. And it's been so long ago now, I can't remember where it came from, I don't know.
It sold to Fire Station.
I can't remember, it was something of something.
I think it was the Fire Station.
So that money was, was, was put in this fund with the intention of, of, of saving the corpus and using the investment of that money in order to fund youth activities, which led to the creation of a youth council who would then make the recommendations to mayor and council on how the money was to be spent. As you can see, it's been pretty inactive over the last couple of years, and maybe longer. So what it really takes, and I've seen this, I've, I've seen this group do very little and I've seen them do a lot over the years. A lot of it depends on, on, on the leadership of somebody, either from council or staff, that really wants to take the ball by heart and do something with it, so. The fund balance right now is what, something around $125,000?
It's 32,000 available, so you don't have to.
So 130,000. So, so yeah, there's, but I don't think the youth fund is got to work in.
I don't, I think a few years ago, I remember, I mean, because my son was here and he, he wanted to do the skate park and he was sitting on the, you know, but after that, it just stopped.
And actually, when Lucci Giacchino was the council liaison to that, they actually did fundraisers, so they actually raised money in addition to the interest rate that they were getting on their $100,000.
That's why there's 32,000 in there.
Well, and hopefully, now that we're kind of COVIDly concerned, getting back in there and, you know, working with the kids and, and get a good, get a good group together.
So did you, did you work with the schools? Did you?
Yes.
Where did you pull the children from?
Well, from the school system.
Okay, so you collaborate with the school system. Is there a contact person at the school?
Well, Mr. Giltner is the one that, he would recommend various students to participate.
I'll call that.
Yes. Okay. I think Bisbee Bus is probably, from an operating standpoint, doing more now than it's done ever. Our, our partnership with the city of Douglas and Douglas Rides has really smoothed away for us the amount of actual administrative work that we have to do on the Bisbee Bus is, is pretty minimal compared to, to the way it used to be when we were operating that solely by ourselves. Plus, it's opened up the opportunities for the bus line that goes between Sierra Mesa and Douglas and who's made us a part of that, so. Now, most of the operating funds for the Bisbee Bus come from the Federal 5311, the U.S. Department of Transportation 521 program. And so that's what you see when you see the federal share. That's our allocation for the next fiscal year, 269,000.
Is there money here for other bus replacement, or is that coming by grain?
That comes by grain.
It's, we did put a capital expenditure of $80,000 in there for us. That would be a lot of share.
That would, I believe, would be the 5310.
We have a bus coming in October.
Really?
So there's the answer to your question.
$80,000 is a wrap, I don't know.
All I can say about the wrap is I'm used to it.
Could be a long time.
It, it is a somewhat considerable expense, I, but, I mean, that's the thing in mass transportation today.
You could get advertising on it.
That's what I.
You could put advertising on it, but that would be a council decision.
There you go. Mel?
Yes, sir.
Advertising by the bus.
Sure, yeah. Whatever you guys want tonight, just ask. Stand in line. Yeah, my phone up.
This, this went a long ways, Mel. I want to let you know, right here.
I know, yeah, I know.
Okay, shall we go to capital improvements? Okay, you can see the revenues, both revenues. Essentially, what this is this year is your financing plan for building the city hall. And so all, all of the components that are involved in, in financing that construction are, are here. So as, I believe we discussed it in detail at the strategy meeting last month. Obviously, there's some larger pots of money, there's some smaller pots of money that all makes it work, so.
Is this the final number, you think, the 3.4?
No, it's not the final number, but I think the final number is going to be lower.
Lower? And the other question, did we get the money, but they didn't trust yet?
No.
Not yet?
No, we'll use that money in October.
Oh.
He did, he, they, the buyer, get, get through the first round of their tax cuts. And so. and so that's an excellent sign looking forward. I think there's another decision going in July. But then, once they receive the tax credits in October, then they'll be able to write checks for the city.
And the check will be for the, for the entire amount, six hundred thousand.
Do you think same money time, will you press?
That's what, that's what we were just talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, we will come in October, October, but it will, it will be received in this fiscal year, so.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll still be a long way from finished by October, I'm pretty sure.
We'll see progress.
We will see progress by October, it'll be. So, um, now, uh, our schedule calls for, um, consideration of the tentative budget next Tuesday. Uh, that's a week from tonight. Um, I don't know that we made any real changes today. So, um, what we'll probably do is print pages where changes were made, rather than print the whole document. So it'll be your responsibility to replace the pages in your book, I'm sorry. Cause I'm, I'm saying I'm sorry because it's a lot of work that I never did right, so. Maybe if I get lucky, maybe one of the questions will, you know. Other than that, um, I think that's a wrap for tonight. Um, if any, uh, questions, comments? Um, I mean, this is the last call for comments for tonight. Uh, if something comes to your mind, that on Thursday, that you say, oh crap, I forgot to ask? Um, okay, come see you, whatever.
I'm gonna bank my last statement here before we, and just as for the public, if they pull this up. And if you look at the final total expense of sixty-eight thou, sixty-eight million dollars compared to previous budgets of twenty-two million, that, they have to understand, it's not like we're just, you know, spending, this is because of all the major, big, huge grants. I mean, we are, we are in both feet trying to get what we can out of the feds and, and the state, everybody else. So, we're not sitting on our laurels, you know, we need for, yeah, we're, we got our hand out, but, but that's what that number is, is it shows you how hard we're working at trying to get the money that we think we deserve in Bisbee, so, here, everybody else. So that's the, I don't wanna hear somebody out there going, oh, look, they've tripled the budget. I mean, we are tripling, and what we're doing is we're.
They're activating.
Yeah.
You're telling me, yeah.
I don't, I just.
Can I just say one more thing, and this is statement presented in this, and we need to go and make sure with him. And, uh, that's what Steve, uh, he, he wrote this, the pension expense. Without some type of action, this expense would eventually be created upon balance, unless service are cut. So we have some big decisions we have to make. And I like this statement, and I want to conclude this, so we have some big decisions to make, how do we go about taking care of this issue? Through the bonds, through the taxes, through whatever we, we want, we need to do. I like, I like to go, to go home thinking about this. And I like that, and I want to conclude this meeting, Chris.
Hopefully we'll have some more news soon.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I would favor to adjourn this work session, so if I have a saying aye.
Aye.
Called may, we are adjourned, thank you.